Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Southfield regular meeting being conducted as a committee of the whole for Monday, April the 5th, 2021 at 6 o'clock via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Banks? Thanks, you said, President. Brightwell?
Here.
Hoskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Morris?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum this evening. We do have the city administrator, deputy city administrator, the mayor, and other department heads on the line. Also note that we have a cumbersome number of participants this evening as panelists on our docket. So if you could, Madam President, I encourage everyone to make sure that their phones are muted when they are not talking. This is the most panelists we've had since we started these meetings. Yes, thank you very much. As our clerk has already stated, if you are not speaking, would you please mute your lines? That would just make it easier on everyone to hear all the conversations that's going on. Our first item is very important. It's the adoption of our resolution declaring a local state of emergency. As all of us know, on April 1st, our mayor, Kenson Cyver, declared the state of emergency for the City of Southfield in accordance with Section 10 of 1976 PA 390. And in this resolution, we're asking to extend our remote meetings based on the health reasons because of the COVID virus and the extension that the governor has given for the state of Michigan. And I think, Madam Clerk or Mayor Cyver, did either of you want to speak to this right now, or do you want me to continue? Madam President? Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, we have a record number of staff people that are quarantined or with COVID currently ill. And in February, there were 144 COVID cases in the four zip codes. In March, that we've just ended, there were 538. So we're definitely seeing a huge spike. And my authority only lasts for one week, so I declared a state of emergency on April 1st. It's now up to the council to extend that. I would recommend an extension, and perhaps the clerk would weigh in on the length of that extension. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to recommend that we extend it to July 5th, but I'm open to hear what anyone else has to say. And the reason I say July 5th, we can rescind it at any time if we feel that it's getting better, but to do, you know, 10 days, 20 days, and then come back another 10 days, 20 days, it gives us the same ability. If things are getting better, then we could just rescind it. We just don't have to keep coming back every, you know, 20 days or so to do this. And I believe, I believe that it's with... I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to touch you. President, this is Councilman Cruz.
Okay.
I was just chiming in to agree with you and say that, you know, I would even be comfortable enough to go into September 1 throughout the summer if that was acceptable, but your proposal, I would also support fully. That's my opinion.
Well, thank you for that. Council, I'll just go around to each one of you and get your input on this matter. Councilwoman Morris, I'll start with you.
I am in agreement with you, Madam President. If it's appropriate, or if the clerk states that that's something that we can do, then I am definitely in agreement with even either your recommendation or Councilman Cruz's September 1 recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
You threw me off there going backwards.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. You know, I would even say, you know, maybe, I'm fine with either proposal. You know, we don't know what's going to happen in the next couple of months, but, you know, what I would say is maybe not necessarily going to September 1, but whatever that, you know, that after Labor Day, whatever that date is, just to make things a little simpler. But I'm fine, you know, either going till after July 4th or after Labor Day is fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with what... I can't talk all of a sudden. I agree with what everyone is saying, either the July 1st or sometime in September, like Councilman Cruz and Mandelbaum are saying, just as long as it's allowable. I'm not sure if there's any requirements in the state law that says it has to be a certain amount of time that we declare an emergency, but if we can do it, I'd be more, I'd be fine with doing either one of them. Like you said, we can always rescind it.
Correct. Thank you. Councilman Cruz was already here. Councilman Brightwell?
I'm fine with this. That's the prudent thing to do. There's no harm, there's no harm done extending this, and whatever is a reasonable period of time, we should do it. There's no sense in coming back every 10, 20 days. So no harm done, and I support extending it to whatever is the acceptable number of days.
Okay.
10, 20, 30, or July 1.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, and I apologize somehow I got kicked off in the beginning. I believe you said July 1. I didn't hear your discussion, Council President.
I suggested July 5th because I was thinking of up to the 4th of July, including the holiday, but Councilman Cruz suggested after Labor Day to give us the summer. That way, anybody that's on vacation, anytime out of school, kids coming back to school, games and all of that, we will have been past all of those times. So I don't know what our total length we can extend it to, but whatever it is, we'd like to at least have July 5th, but if we could go beyond that to after Labor Day, as was recommended, we will do that.
Thank you. I'm in support of either/or, you know, both dates are fine with me. I think it's smart to go to at least July 5th so we don't have to come back again. Thank you.
Thank you. And per our discussions, Madam Clerk or Madam Attorney, is there any reasons why we could not do the extension of the days as we proposed, either July 5th or September? I don't have my calendar in front of me, but I can grab one real quick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, I'm May. This is the Kinga City Attorney. There isn't anything in the law that says that we have to have a certain amount of days. I did look at when the governor was declaring orders, as you recall, last year it was 28 days, or it could be longer, but that, at that time, they were saying 28 days. As far as local government, I do not see anything that limits us. So I did see the one city, I want to say it was Kalamazoo, I think they went to, excuse me, August. So as long as we obviously have the information and the necessity for this, I do not see where there is a limit on how long we can do once we extend it from what the mayor already has declared.
Okay. Well, Labor Day is September the 6th, and so if we wanted to go, we don't, our next meeting after that would be September 13th. So if we wanted to do September 6th or September 7th? Madam President, this is the Madam City Clerk. Skip over me in the beginning. It's okay. Based on what our Madam City Attorney said, that other comparable cities have gone anywhere from 90 days to 120 days out, one of the reasonings for declaring the local state of emergency is obviously the COVID cases numbers increasing, and also it gives us the ability to recoup any funds because the city has declared a state of emergency. The only thing that I could think of where we would have to be careful is how the fiscal year ends with us declaring a state of emergency. So if we had to come back and change something, we can do it, but most cities have been anywhere from, the most that I've seen for a local state of emergency has been the 120-day marker. So if we went with the September 5th, I believe, I think that would put us in that company. Okay. So it actually take us through Labor Day weekend, so it'll take us through September the 6th, which is Labor Day. Okay, but you do bring up a point. We are crossing years in our fiscal year, so I don't know what that might do to anything, but safety is first and foremost, so. Right, I believe that if we did do something, if we came back at a July meeting, we could, we could update the language to extend it again if that became an issue, but I just wanted to let the body know that that was something that we're aware of. Okay, all right. Well, Council, I'm going to, since we can do the 120 days, let's do that. We can always come back and rescind it, and that gives everybody something to work with, our boards and commissions, all of our administration, everything that'll give them time to work out whatever little things that might come up. So I'm going to propose the September 5th date, and I'll ask for motion.
This is Councilman Cruz. I'd like to move for Rule 10.
Support, Councilwoman Morris.
Okay. It's been motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Morris for an immediate need to act for Rule 10. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
And now entertain the motion.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, if I could, I'd like to move that we extend the, I guess, we extended the resolution declaring a local state of emergency, which will keep us remote for the next 120 days, or earlier if deemed necessary.
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz and supported by Councilwoman Morris to extend the state of emergency held 120 days until September 5th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes, but I have a question when we're through. Or should I say it now?
Let's finish the vote and then we'll have the question. I think that's the proper way to go. Correct. Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay, Nancy, please ask your question.
Council President, I thought Councilman Cruz said September 6th, and you said September 5th. So it is September 6th, correct? Or is, the 5th is a Sunday, the 6th is a Monday?
Well, we won't be meeting on the 6th anyway, but the 5th, I believe, is the 120-day mark because today is the 5th.
Okay.
But I'll divert to the City Attorney.
20 days. I said 120 days.
Okay.
120 days, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, this is Dawn. If we go to September, would that be more than 120 days?
Six months.
120 days is actually four months, so that would take us to August the 3rd. So I think it's, you guys.
Heard you, Miss Kirk Hawkins, because I thought you said 120, it's going to get to September initially, so I apologize. I did want to say till September as I initially stated.
Well, you made the motion, Council, Councilman Cruz, so you can amend the motion because you were the maker of the motion to be reflective till September the 5th, through September the 5th, and then you would just need a support of the amendment, a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay, I would like to move that.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz and supported by Councilwoman Morris to amend our motion to September 5th, from the 120 days to 180 days, to, up to and through September 5th of 2021.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we go further, can I get clarification? Now, if Alan Stewart, early on, 120 was acceptable within the rules, whatever the common wisdom is right now, or going out farther, are we still within our authority, or are we violating any acceptable rule or any laws?
If I heard our city attorney correctly, there was no date mentioned. What they were alluding to with the 120 days is what they've seen other municipalities do. Please correct me if I'm misquoting Madam Attorney or Madam Clerk. Madam President, you are completely right. We just said that what we've seen was a maximum 120 days that does not prohibit us from going above and beyond that, and in the event that things do change, this council would act appropriately in declaring the state of emergency over.
Okay, so we have nothing definitively saying that we are breaking the rule or we are not breaking the rule. We're just going on what we have seen others do, and we will, in the event something pops up, we will come back and rectify this. That's what we're saying?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Our next item is the presentation regarding the sale of vacant city-owned lots.
Thank you, Council President. As I think everyone is aware, the administration, the mayor's office, and the assessing department have come up with some proposed sales for vacant city-owned lots with the requirement that a home be built within 18 months. Of course, these are only proposed because council sets prices for real property. Now, these are reduced prices, and a reasonable question came up as far as what is the city losing when it sells at a reduced price? On the next page, just to demonstrate, these are some of the homes that are listed on a city website. We've had a lot more interest since this website has been posted. We'll have some sales later on today to recommend to you or tonight, but this has really helped us in being able to put these prices and give some inspiration to builders, and some people who want to build their own has been really fruitful. On the next page, we did a comparison. We compare the same lot, if we sold it at its retail value, well, at its real price of $13,560, or we sell that same parcel to someone for $5,000 with the requirement that they build that home within 18 months or risk losing the lot. So I've done a brief comparison between the two on the next page. The vacant lot that remains vacant because we had no requirement that a home be built is in gray. The lot that we required a home be built is in gold, and as you can see, I assume that there were two years taxed at this current price, a current value of the lot. It could be only one year, but assuming it's two, worst-case scenario, as you can see, about year five, we are breaking even, even though we sold the lot for much less than we would have sold it to, say, a neighbor who wanted to side-lot it. Year 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, the lower price definitely wins out. For the city, we really have to think of ourselves as being city owners and not just lot owners. If I were a lot owner, all I would care about is what I get for that lot right now because I move away, it's never mine, I never have to worry about it again. But we're a city owner, and we have to continue worrying about everything regardless of who it's sold to or who buys it, and in this instance, it shows that in the long run, and the goal, by the way, is just city tax revenue, not all tax revenue. So obviously, we help the school district, we help the zoo, we help a lot of other entities by doing this, but this just measures how we help ourselves. And as you can see, dollars and cents, just the 10th year, there's no comparison. I mean, if we did the 10th year, it would almost be a 10th year would be break even if we just gave the lot away as well. So I think this is a good example of why sometimes selling cheap is really the right price to sell something. And on the next page, we discuss a few other factors. First of all, remember, if you hold out for the highest dollar, you may never get it. And there are costs for maintaining property. There's maintenance costs. I know a lot of times that residents nearby will maintain a lot because the city maintains vacant lots at a lower standard than most people want their front yards maintained, but even if someone else maintains that lot, we're still responsible for it. So if someone doesn't cut around a deep hole and someone falls in and breaks their ankle, that's our liability. So there is a cost at just maintaining these parcels. Furthermore, there are a lot of other benefits to selling this home to, or parcel to someone who's going to build a home. Remember how hard we worked to identify residents for the census? Well, here's our opportunity to make residents. That's even better. We also spread out our water and sewer costs. Now, of course, that's an enterprise fund, so it doesn't profit or lose, but the more customers you bring in, the better you're able to spread those fixed costs. So in essence, we're lowering the cost for other residents a little bit. We make for a more appealing block. If you sell a lot to someone and they keep it empty, it still looks like a vacant lot, probably. And vacant lots are almost like missing teeth on a block. They don't add to the community's look. Finally, we bring in more people, we bring in more residents, we make a more vibrant community. So this helps us. As I said, maybe some of the residents send their kids to Southfield Public Schools or Birmingham Public Schools, and again, we have helped ourselves because a strong school district creates a strong city. The numbers I used for this, I did not make up. This was the vacant lot on Maida that council approved on October 19th. The buyer on that was not quite ready to prepare to purchase, but he is now and would like to move forward. So this was, this was on my mind, so that's why I used this price. This was a real-world example. So I think, and I hope that council agrees, that sometimes selling for less brings us a lot more, and I'm ready to answer any questions, of course.
Okay, thank you. Council, I'll go to you. Ari, Mandelbaum?
Yes, I have no questions. I think that it's good that we finally try to sell some of these vacant lots as well and hopefully get some homes and create some additional tax revenue, so I'm in favor. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Hoskins?
I don't have any real questions. I just think, just like Mandelbaum, I just think it's good that we're building more homes. I know there's been issues with housing, just as far as the sheer lack of it. We also have a good problem here in Southfield that our home values are very high. Our home values are going up, and that's, you know, that's always good for the people who are living here, and it just means, hopefully creates more opportunity for more people to come. So I'm looking forward to doing this. Actually, as I talk, I do have one question. John, did you say, since that site's been up, there's been more interest in the parcels because they know, like, there's a list now that people can see?
Actually, a item of discussion later on this meeting is five homes being sold to a builder who located those five homes on the website. Or parcels, empty parcels to become homes. So yes, there is, it's great. We're really happy with the websites, the responses we're receiving.
Good, good. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
There's been cover for me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
This is Councilman Brightwell. I was trying to get in my mute button. I have no questions, and I think John made his presentation to the Finance Committee is a worthy endeavor. Thank you, John, again.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris?
No, I have no questions. My question was answered, John, when you went over the chart there that you had in reference to the tax revenues that would be brought into the city with the actual, all right purchases of the lot versus the option to build a home. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the call, mayor or anyone else have any comments? Okay, hearing none. This will move to our consent agenda next week. Our next item is the proposed sale of real property.
Council President, once again, this is perfect to the question Councilman Hoskins asked. These are the five empty parcels that a builder, Mondo Construction, identified from our website and would like to purchase. The homes that they are proposing to build are quality homes, including, well, it's indicated in the agenda item what they intend to build and what the selling price should be. Our administrator, Mr. Zorn, is familiar with the work they do. He's satisfied with the quality of the work. Some of the improvements or some of the features they will include are listed in the website. This is great. This is a company that pretty much specializes on infill. They've done this successfully in numerous cities. There are representatives from the company here to discuss and answer questions. If they could be allowed to make a short verbal presentation, that would be great.
Sure.
I believe the President, Nick Del Breco, is on. I don't know who else from the firm, though.
Hello, Councilmen and women. I don't know if you can hear me or not. I'm unfamiliar with this WebEx platform.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to address you guys tonight. I have my partner, who, he'll know the sales for us as well, Matthew Abrow, on the line also. Just a quick history on what we do, Mondo Construction. I'm the sole owner, has been for approximately 25 years, and we work through all the different local municipalities and their state and federal government programs, CDBG, NSP, UDD, and so on. We've constructed new construction homes for multiple municipalities on their lots. We're currently doing so in the City of Warren right now and just finished a large project for the City of Taylor. We've worked for the City of Southfield before. So in being down there doing work within your guys' city, I constantly keep my eyes out for vacant lots that we can go in and put up a home on. I mean, we build energy-efficient homes, affordable homes, usually for first-tier home buyers. We find it's easier, you know, to sell, you know, when the price points down, and then we kind of shy away from going into... And then we kind, we we kind of shy away from going into big subdivisions, you know, big fifty, eighty lot tracts because um we self perform quite a bit of our own work. We have our own equipment. Uh, we do subcontract out quite a bit, but we, I have a staff that can self perform. Um, you know, a lot of the different functions and the difficulties that come in with, you know, infill lots. You have existing neighbors that have been there for a long time. There's a lot of usually debris or trees that are on the lot. Sometimes there's, you know, difficulties with utilities, being sanitary and and storm or water locations. And we we're familiar with how to uh bring those to the, develop that lot. Um, so in speaking with John originally, I had found one lot on Alston, I believe, or myself, when we contacted him and, you know, there's, you know, found out it was owned by the city. And then he referred me to uh the website where I looked at all the other lots that you guys had for sale. So I I um, what we did is I I got with Matthew and we drove around and took a a block of them. And we we pinpointed, you know, five or six of them and said, if we're going to come down to your city to build one, might as well do five and make it worthwhile. So we're 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 optimistic. We're 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 excited about the opportunity that goes through. Um, I would be more than happy to present, you know, provide any kind of recommendations from different other municipalities. Um, we've currently built over a hundred and twenty new construction homes. Um, we're in good standard with every agency and uh we're hoping to make it work down in Southfield.
Okay, did anyone else want to speak to this before we go over to council? Okay. Um, John, is is number three and number four together or on the same topic or are they two totally different?
Sorry, number four was actually the the Maida house or property that was going to be purchased. The seller or buyer was not able to proceed right away. So I wasn't really clear on if I needed counsel to approve again. It had been five months since counsel initially approved it. If counsel's comfortable with the approval that's already there standing, then we don't even have to talk about number four.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, we'll go to council then with this item uh with the uh several parcels. And I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Uh, Mike, uh, thank you. Uh, my question is just uh for uh Mr. Del Greco. I just have, just in general, I just have questions about um how things are going as far as, you know, home building uh here in Michigan. Are you having any issues uh related to, I don't know, COVID, um, you know, getting supplies, getting material to build your home?
That's a very valid question. And there has been some difficulties. If you guys have seen the news, COVID is is really slowed down quite a bit of different things. Materials, uh, material prices have all raised. Lumber, windows, appliances. They're in uh, they're in high demand. So it takes a little bit longer, you know, to get the materials, but with proper planning. And we have, we have existing vendors that we've been dealing with for years. Um, we've been over, we've been able to overcome. It has taken a little bit longer, a little bit more difficult, uh, you know, on our end. Sometimes, you know, during the lockdown, we were we were unable to do certain projects. But um, we're confident that uh, you know, we 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 can perform and and hit the, it hit what we agreed to. Now, Matthew was on the line. He uh, he runs Silverstone Real Estate. It's my partner and I could think you can attest to the the sales now, which surprisingly, I'll let I'll let Matt tell you that. But um, I think there's a bidding wars on homes right now and a lack of inventory.
Hello, Councilman Hoskins. Thank you for allowing us on here just to kind of go off of what Nick said um with the new construction. My name is Matt Abro with Silverstone Real Estate. And we've been getting a record number of people calling about new construction, what we have available, obviously being partners with Nick. Uh, they know that we do a lot of new construction homes. And in the last four months, I can't even tell you how many phone calls we've been answering regarding the homes that Nick has built in the area. Um, it's it's been overwhelming. It's been great. Uh, we've actually started looking for so many more lots because of it. Um, and you know, like, like Nick said, I'm really uh confident that we can perform and and get the job done.
What is, you know, what a typical home would sell for in our uh, in our area or in the city?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, just that that's kind of a, if we're talking about like a fourteen hundred square foot ranch, you know, we're looking in the two seventy range, give or take, you know, five to 10 grand. Uh, that's the target uh for going into like the twenty two hundred square foot Colonials. Those are, you know, in the low, like three twenty, three twenty five for for something like that. Um, now, those obviously vary, you know, depending on the market. But right now, um, you know, new construction, as you guys mentioned earlier, the pricing in your city, the homes values have gone up quite a bit. And that brings new construction as a possibility. People are looking and they're saying, you know, it, you start looking at the value of it and I think, uh, you know, that that comes into play quite a bit.
Um, and this is a question for either one of you. Um, so the eighteen months building, building uh something within the eighteen months, that's not going to be an issue?
I I think the way that Nick's structure is set up, we've done this many times with his crew and the way that they're organized, going from one lot to another to another, and it just follow the leader and the job gets done. I have no, I have full confidence that that they'll get the job done in eighteen months, yes, on all five lots.
Well.
I would like to clarify, um, I would like to clarify, though. Yeah, I would like to clarify for, wow, that eighteen month period, we we would assume that that period of time would start, you know, once the building permits are approved. Um, I obviously there'll be no delays in some middle, but we have to, you know, go ahead and do the toes and all. And then get it. And so you guys but we we, but the eighteen months would be from the time that we actually get the green light and say, okay, you guys can go and start working.
Okay. All right, that's all the uh, the questions that I have. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Cruz.
Well, thank you, guys.
Uh, no, Madam President, I'm uh, I feel comfortable with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell.
Um, I feel comfortable with this and and as, as everyone knows, our, our bread is buttered on, we need residence and and real estate taxes. So I feel comfortable with with this. John, uh, one addition of this, we might have covered this. Uh, but I know we have stipulation of the being built in eighteen months. But we we do specify these homes cannot be rentals, right? Oh, is that a part of the sales agreement?
That was not included in the resolution and my suspicion is that market forces will prevent that from happening regardless.
Okay, all right. But I, um, okay, well, that, as everyone knows, you know, this, this, uh, we, I will bring this up again in a certain forum. Uh, rentals are not, you know, we 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 would not be appreciating rentals, that's for sure. Okay, but I feel comfortable with it and I do know that uh, I think this is along the same track of uh residence and and real estate taxes. And I think that's the genesis for this, so. Thanks, John, but we, I will bring the same, this back up about rentals. Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, thank you. Um, to the developer, um, I'm happy to see that these are not under a thousand square foot homes. Um, it's nice to see that you're building a ranch. Um, that's probably going to go real fast. It seems like ranches are in high demand right now. And I'm happy to see even the the twenty two hundred square foot home. Um, people want larger homes. Um, so thank you. Do you by any chance have any visuals of what you have recently built that you could send to council so we could just see um your homes? I just tried Googling it. I can't find anything.
Well, if I, if I well, if I could get the council um, you know, councilman's, woman's email, I would be more than happy to send of new construction homes that we built on infill lots in all the surrounding communities, as well as a few pictures and elevations of the homes we we have built. I'd be more than happy to do so.
Okay, um, I would personally like to see that and also, um, I'm glad to see your price point. Um, I think that um, it, you may even do better than um what you're proposing. But um, I think this is exciting and um we're in desperate need of new homes in the city and in desperate need of larger new homes in the city so we can attract some of the younger people and their families.
Well, yeah, and and to to your point, the price point that we had came up with in in our discussions is the, one of the degrees difficulties we have in building infill lots is that when you sell them, um, you, then people have mortgages, they have to get comps in that surrounding community. While at Infill Lot, some of the lots you have were have been thirty years old and all the homes are thirty years old. So those are the comps that are going to be pulled when someone comes to buy it versus a brand new construction in there in in that. So we 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 try to, we're trying to keep them lower price points um, because we know the challenges we're going to have when the comps are pulled at a later point in time. But like I say, like, like you said, I cross their fingers if we can get more, we'd be more than happy to take.
Councilwoman, if I could add, add to that too, we we always like to start in a reasonable price point and let the market determine where we're at when we start to market it. Um, and and we start getting inquiries about it. Um, you know, we don't vary too far from our purchase price, but you know, we like to start reasonable and get interest in the property and and allow that to take its course.
Okay, um, so so the prices that you have um that were submitted to council, those are not necessarily correct?
No, that that is where we, you know, fully plan to market the properties. But like you said, you know, values of homes have gone up because interest is there. So if we get 10 people coming to the lot, I mean, maybe it goes up a little bit, you know, as they're competing for the lot.
Right. All right, well, um, like I said, I'm going to be really excited to see what your homes look like because I um, I'm excited with the price points you're also offering. Thank you.
And and if if you could work with uh John, you could send the uh pictures to our city clerk and she will disseminate to the uh council.
More than happy to.
We we will get on that right away.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. Um, yes, in the uh information that we received, you shared um um, information on the energy efficient um amenities that were going to be standard in your homes. But I just wondered uh what your process was going to be uh to make sure that uh the homes that you build are consistent with the style and structure and um aesthetic of the um, you know, the the block. Because you've got, you've, you're buying five properties on five different blocks. And so I I know they're not going to be cookie cutter, so just, I'd just like for you to expand on that a little bit.
Well, what we do is, you know, once we have a letter of intent or we close, we, I get our architect to modify the exterior elevations, um, you know, to to match accordingly with with the different streets that they're on. Um, you know, this way they conform to those neighborhoods. We're going to have to change the outsides. The insides, you know, we we're subject to to build um under the new energy efficient um, ener- e- energy codes. So it's all, you know, the the, the process is all two by six exterior walls, insulated basements, foundations, you know, R thirty eight insulation up in the attics. Um, those, those features are all going to be there. The aesthetics on the outside, the elevations, what they look like, we will have our architect can, you know, draw them per lot uh to conform with that existing street. I mean, there, there's, you know, there's a, there's a couple lots, I believe, that um are somewhat set away from other homes. And there's some that are, you know, sixty foot lots that all the homes on the streets look the same. So we'll try to keep them as such.
Okay, good, great. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Mandelbaum.
Uh, no, I have no questions. I think the uh, this is great. Uh, and again, it's uh, we def- definitely need uh new housing in our city and I'm happy with everything I've heard so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else on the uh call today have any comments?
Yeah, Council President, this is Ken Cyper. Uh, I appreciate uh Councilwoman Morris's um question. Uh, as we certainly don't, and I think uh Councilwoman uh Banks alluded to it as well. Uh, we we want houses built that are are going to conform to the general size uh on a square footage basis uh to other homes in the neighborhood. Um, I I have a question for the builder. Um, if uh somebody came to you and said, um, I I want a custom home and um I have an architect, uh, would you build it for me? So um, I mean, are you that flexible or you just build what, what you know or what you have?
Well, I I'd be more than happy to be that flexible, but you know, with with signing up that the, with the, you know, knowing that we have to be done within eighteen, you know, starting to have these homes within eighteen months, we'll have our spec homes ready to go. If someone comes in in the meantime, you know, we would definitely work with them. Um, absolutely, we 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 do that quite often, actually.
Well, I would also mention that um, we um, uh, there's a home that just today um, that we, the South of Montrose, uh partnered with a private builder. And that home, um, we were thinking, this is a rehab home, fourteen hundred square feet. We were thinking it, it would sell for, and it's below nine mile. Uh, we were thinking it would sell for two hundred thousand. Uh, it it got listed at two forty nine. Uh, the bid that came in on it today is at two sixty nine.
Yes, beautiful.
This person does not want to be outbid uh because there's no inventory. There's a great demand uh for housing right now. Uh, thi- this is really with the interest rates where they are um for loans. Uh, this is the ideal time to build and buy. It's um a great seller's market. Um, but again, there's low inventory, so I'm very enthusiastic about this. These lots, we, many of them we've carried for years. Uh, we're mowing the grass, we're, we're taking, uh, we've had the liability. So it's good to see them uh turned over, improve our tax base and grow our population. So thank you.
Well, you're you're welcome. And and if I don't, if you, if I may, you know, we're looking to build long lasting relationships everywhere we go. We're not a one and done type company. Me and Matt like to be personally involved. I'm on every site. I I I run approximately thirty projects at all times. And I make it every month, every week to visit them all, I'm personally involved. I can tell you that if it, if it helps the city council and the city itself, if they would like to write a clause in a purchase agreement with we closed that they can look at the elevations of our homes, I'd be more than happy to show John and I'll work with him and 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 he can put the final approval on it. I have no problem with that whatsoever. In addition, if this works out well on our end, we will definitely be back, you know, be back to look at the other vacant lots that you guys have.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, anyone else have any comments? Okay, we're hearing none. I will move this to our agenda for next week, our consent agenda. Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, yes, I I'd like to make a comment on the the sale, sale of five lots.
Okay, and your name and address, your name and address, please?
My name, my name is John McCurdy. Um, I, address is one nine eight six oh twelve mile.
Okay, so this is, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, my comment to, in in today's world that black lives really matter, we, it would be nice to get a black developer, African American guy or a developer that would be interested in uh building some houses out there for the community. I think that would be um an equal rights opportunity in today's world, the way um they were um shunned over and treated so badly uh for many, many years. I think we need to go over and above to um help um the citizens of the community or the African American people. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Uh, okay, thank you. Again, if there's no other questions. Uh, okay, thank you. Again, if there's no other questions, we will move this to our consent agenda for next week. Alright, um.
Madam, Madam President, pardon the interruption. We just need some clarity for, I think our items got mixed up a little bit. Uh, council never decided on item number three, which they previously had approved, uh, a few months ago. Uh, as far as that purchase, if council deemed it necessary to reapprove this resolution or it would just be a continuation of what was approved, uh, five mi- months ago on this property?
Okay, I'll have John give us another update right now on, uh, that, that's the MAEDA property. And I was going to remind him or ask him to speak to that too, but thank you. Uh, John, for, for, but for item four, we're comfortable with moving it to the consent agenda.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for getting the two out of order. I was having so much fun with the presentation that I missed the order.
Okay.
Sorry. The, as stated by Madam Clerk, this was already approved five months ago. The, um, due to some miscommunication on my part with the buyer, he wasn't quite ready to purchase, but he is ready to purchase now. There was no time limit put in the resolution. There was no time limit discussed in the agenda as far as the sale occurring. This sale will probably occur quicker than our eight mile parking lot sale, which requires some work regarding brownfield and some testing and so forth. So my thought was that unless council particularly wanted to review this again, it's already been approved once and it could just move forward based on that. I understand that is up to the city attorney as well, so I thought I would just bring this up. And if council wishes to review it, that's fine. If not, it's already been done.
Okay. So Madam Attorney, is there anything we need to do or can we move this forward to the, to the, uh, consent agenda next week?
Oh, Madam Attorney, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, Madam President, this is Don. I am not familiar with this, um, a hundred percent to say yes or no at this time. I would like to review it. So.
Okay.
Memory, it takes some time, so I don't know which will be the better option, because I don't want to say yes. Let's just go ahead, because I don't have a full record on this.
Okay.
Council President, if I could, if it moves to the, if it moves to the consent agenda, we're covered either way. Council just approves the same sale under the same terms twice. I don't think that's really a challenge.
Okay. Um, alright, uh, council, do we, do you want to discuss? I don't think we need to discuss it. It's already been approved once, but, um, I'll, I'll hear from you if you, if, you know, if anybody wants to speak to this, um, House of MAEDA that we approved previously. Does anybody have any additional questions or concerns regarding this property? And I'll just run through really, really quick, because I, I don't know if we, we will or not. Uh, Nancy, I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, thank you. Um, yes, I do have a question. I'm sorry, what was the reason that we're ex- extending this? I remember when this came forward and I thought, um, Mr. Harnett was, um, all set and ready to move forward. So what happened?
Well, actually, council, and what happened was he did send an email just before the, or before the council meeting and said, hey, I need to hold off a little bit. I, I didn't see that.
Okay.
So had I seen that, it wouldn't have come to you until now, but, uh, since I didn't, it went to you early.
And this is for the same cost of five thousand dollars and he will be under the same eighteen month, um, ruling?
Yes, there's no change at all, whether it's approved again or we just simply go with the original. The terms are exactly the same.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Okay, Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Morris?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll go ahead and move this to the consent agenda. But, uh, Madam Attorney, if you have any questions or anything, we'll pull it at, at, at the next meeting for further discussion for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is the authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department. Um, please mute your lines if you're not speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Councilman, Mr. Mayor, Fire Chief Johnny Minifee. I'm seeking authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department. Currently, the Southfield Fire Department has several hundred feet of various sizes of inch and three quarter, two and a half, and five inch fire hose that are at or about to be, um, meet their life expectancy. The National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, outlines ten years as a service life for all fire hose. This replacement fire hose, outdated, will ensure that the fire department's ability to properly extinguish fires in a safe manner. CSI Emergency Apparatus is the sole authorized dealer for this equipment in our geographical region for this purchase. Fiscal impact for this expenditure will be sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. The funding will be out of the fiscal twenty-one budget Fire Station Operations Supply Account. I did vet this through our purchasing and finance department. Our old hose will be downgraded for reserve apparatus. We're taken out of, um, taken, taken out of service per NFPA, uh, guideline recommendations. Uh, I'm seeking approval to purchase, um, the various lengths of hose for sixty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars from CSI Emergency Apparatus out of Grayling, Michigan. I yield back to you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, council, um, starting with you, Councilman Brightwell?
I'm here. I have a trouble with this mute, but, uh, I, I have definitely no, no problem with this. Uh, Chief, what is the ETA on those hoses if we ordered them? Uh, if and we've ordered, what, what would be the arrival date?
Um, normally it's going to be about four to six weeks, but with COVID, you know, it might be a, a little longer. Uh, we're purchasing quite a bit of hose, um, so I, I would say it should be around forty-six, but a little more difficult.
Okay, I, I have no problem. I, I support this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
I have no problem with it whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris?
No questions. I'm in support of this purchase. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Banks?
I'm in support of this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else have any comment towards, uh, this item?
I, I'd like to thank you. I thank you for the purchase.
Thank you. Alright, this will be moved to our consent agenda for next week. Our next item is presentation and discussion for regarding the zoning ordinance text amendment. Uh, Terry Crowde, I believe that's you.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So if the council may recall, in October of two thousand nineteen, we amended the overlay development district to allow for medical marijuana sales and auto truck sales and showrooms in the Northland ODD district only. And, um, we recently discovered a clerical error on the text amendment that was sent to the clerk's office, um, which, uh, misappropriated, uh, where the district was permitted in several other districts of the ODD, which was never the intent. The, um, summary that was published in the paper was correct. The online version is correct. The, um, hard copies that were printed afterwards are correct. But the copy that was officially sent to the clerk's office contained this clerical error. We contacted the city attorney about how to best resolve that. She felt to be most transparent to go through the same process to amend the ordinance and to correct the error. And so we simply, uh, it got misappropriated to the wrong table or to an additional table than the ones that was intended to. And our, uh, again, our ordinance, uh, has this contradiction, uh, in it, um, where it's permitted and also prohibited in the other districts, so we wanted to clean that up. Next slide, please. So the table on the right is the corrected version that was pu- published online and, and, and printed correctly. The table on the left shows that medical marijuana facilities are prohibited in all other districts except for Northland. But the table above shows that medical marijuana facilities are permitted in the other, uh, ODD districts. So again, we're just trying to correct a clerical error that was made by the planning department on the copy that was forwarded to the clerk's office as part and parcel to the ordinance that was approved. But it was never published in any other document incorrectly. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to council for any questions or comments. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
I have no comments.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no questions for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, to the council. This will, um, come back to you at, uh, April twenty-sixth for, um, the public hearing and the correction of the, uh, the error.
Okay.
Next slide, please. Our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding rezoning requests and site plan review request for Walgreens located at two nine zero seven zero Fairfax and, uh, twelve mile and Marshall. Um, next slide. Mr. Bryce, our, our planner, is going to introduce the project. The developer and his team are available to provide some additional information. And I will be available to answer any questions that the council may have. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Bryce.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, good evening, council. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, so as Planner Crowde mentioned, this is PZR twenty-one dash zero 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 three and Site Plan Review Request, ESP twenty-one dash zero 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 four. Uh, petitioner A and S Properties on behalf of the owner Alwazir Properties Group and, uh, for the rezoning portion only, uh, Dorian Hui. Uh, so the project area is the north side of twelve mile between Fairfax and Marshall. You can see it's a, it's two parcels. Uh, one is fairly large. It takes up most of the site. And then there's a small, uh, portion of one parcel, um, in northwest corner of the site. Um, so that's a single family house that's currently involved in the project area. Uh, the current existing onsite is RA Single Family Residential, uh, P vehicular parking and OS Office Service. Uh, the rezoning request is to rezone, uh, one point one seven acres of land from the existing zoning to a B-three general business and P vehicular parking. Um, the site plan request is to construct a ninety-four hundred square foot Walgreens with a drive-through pharmacy. Uh, next slide, please. This is a closer up of the site. Uh, this aerial is from twenty seventeen, so it shows, uh, a single family house, uh, near twelve mile. That's since been removed, uh, so it's currently a vacant, uh, parcel, except for the, uh, house in the northwest corner that is still existing. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the future land use map, which shows, uh, the project area split down the middle with local mixed use on twelve mile side with moderate density, single family on the northern side. Next slide, please. And here are the, uh, current and proposed zonings for the site. Um, so currently there's the office service along twelve mile, a fair amount of P, uh, vehicular parking serving as a buffer, and that single family house, that's that RA in the northwest corner. What they're proposing is B-three general business through the majority of the site, uh, with a strip of, uh, vehicular parking P along the back. Uh, I do want to note that the B-three portion is zone, uh, one acre. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, here's a site plan for the site. Uh, so this was brought to council last month as just a discussion item only. Um, they took a lot of the feedback that they heard there and they worked it into their site. So both of the side entrances on Marshall and Fairfax have been moved down, so neither one of them is across from a single family home. Uh, they do have a pedestrian connection from twelve mile. They have their bike racks. Uh, on the west side of the building, they do have a, uh, wooden enclosure for their, uh, loading zone, as well as their trash compactor. Um, they're putting sidewalks along Marshall and Fairfax. Um, and they've been in discussions with the, the neighborhood. Uh, I'll let them speak to that in greater detail. But in particular, the neighbor on the northwest, uh, who spoke out against this project, um, actually has been in talks with the developer and he's electing to, uh, go forward with a wooden fence in place of a masonry wall. Um, so he's looking to work with the developer and create a boundary against the property, something more residential in character. Uh, next slide, please. Here's a landscape rendering of the site. You can see some of the, the hedges and the screening. Um, residential landscape buffer specifically along the northwestern, uh, area of the site. Uh, next slide, please. Here are the elevations, um, somewhat, uh, Walgreens standard, but they were able to work in a few of our city requirements with these as well. Next slide. They did provide a photometric plan, um, they are planning the zero foot candles, the lot line. Next slide, please. Um, I believe, is there, is there a next slide or is that, uh, questions? Okay, so I guess for here, I'd like to introduce, uh, Paul Weisberger.
He's kind of a- I'm sorry, excuse me. I, I have a question. I had my, I put my hand raised feature up when the first gentleman start talking.
Uh, this is the presentation. The questions will come at another time. We have it a little later under, uh, comments and communication.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so I, we do have Paul Weisberger and his team on the line. So Paul, if you could just kind of briefly, uh, explain this project, why Walgreens is moving, um, I guess some of the changes that have been made since you last spoke to council, uh, your dialogue with the neighbors, um, any other information?
Yes, uh, thanks, uh, Kyle. Um, it's my pleasure to speak to you tonight. Uh, since we've last met, we have had, uh, discussion item with planning commission as well as, um, formal presentation and vote. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we received unanimous positive recommendation for both the site plan and the rezoning request. Uh, one of the things that came up, both at planning commission and at city council discussion, was, uh, you know, vehicular traffic on the residential roads, um, neighborhood character of the northern part of the property and what could be done to mitigate those issues as well as keep Walgreens in the city of Southfield. Um, I will tell you that the, and I, I think it's been articulated, but I, I have, uh, Jamie Schmidt from Walgreens who'd be happy to speak to this, but the, there is a, there is a decision that they need to make on whether they're going to move here or, or leave the, the quadrant in, in the city. Um, and that is mostly being driven, almost entirely being driven by the fact that the concept of a larger fourteen to fifty thousand square foot Walgreens, uh, no longer fits with today's modeling. Um, and that's based on the types of items that they sell in the store and what they need to be, to be competitive. So, uh, we're the proposed developer. Obviously, our interest is in providing a home. But looking at the bigger picture, we hope that, uh, the city of Southfield, uh, and, and, uh, in conjunction with this development can keep Walgreens in, in the area. And I'll let Jamie, uh, after I get done talking, maybe speak a little bit to, uh, some of the specifics on the move. What we did on the residential, um, side of it was we moved the Marshall Street, uh, down south so that it's now, um, appears to be a little bit across the street from the playground area of the, the school, uh, daycare area. And then we moved the entrance, uh, more significantly to the south on Fairfax. So it's across from the, the OS- So it's across from the OS or office building to our west. We were asked to provide some hedge rows or shrubbery along the north-south road, Fairfax and Marshall. We did everywhere that we could, other than where the sidewalk juts onto the property. That was done and proposed in a way to which to mitigate any any sort of vehicular traffic. We, if you look on this landscape render, it's hard to see, but in the northwest corner, again, we're purchasing a home. That's part of the RA rezoning request. And we have met with the neighbor to our northwest, which is Al Alanya. And, you know, we have worked with him in which to move the fence line instead of right on the property line. We've moved it further south into the greenbelt area that we have there so that it gives off more of an open air area feel and appearance, instead of having the fence right on the fence line. Since we last discussed this item with the Planning Commission, Al has indicated that he is looking for more of a masonry brick, decorative brick type fence, instead of the residential wood type fence. We'll work with him in any way we can. Obviously, wood is less expensive than brick, but we will do what it takes to make the northern property line buffer correct. And so we are, we are willing to put in a brick fence, masonry fence, a wood fence, whatever would help appease Al in terms of the appearance next to his home. I also have on the phone with me the developer Frank Outish. He might be able to speak a little bit more to some of the neighbors that he's talked to. More importantly, no offense Frank, I do have Julie Kroll, who's our traffic engineer consultant. That's one of the things that we were asked to do is a traffic study. They would be happy to answer any questions that relates to the minimal traffic predicted to come off of the side streets. The vast majority of the traffic that will hit the site will be coming off of the 12 Mile entrance and exit. And Julie can speak to that. And then lastly, I do have at your disposal Jamie Schmidt, again, to answer any questions about the move, but also hours of operation. It's important to note that the trash that's produced at this site is not of a perishable nature. It's cardboard in nature. And that that is done through a compacting machine that's contained right next to the building on the west side. And so with that, I'd be happy to, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Jamie Schmidt speak to the necessity of the move, maybe further elaborate on it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is Jamie Schmidt. I'm with Walgreens. I manage the entire state of Michigan, Indiana, and Ohio for Walgreens. Typically, Walgreens is a neighborhood pharmacy. We always put our buildings in, over the last 25 years on corners in highly residential areas. There's very few of them that are in large strip centers or mall areas because we wanted to be close to our customers. About 10 years ago, now this building is 20 years old. It was opened in 2001. About 10 years ago, the model started shifting because as we built these huge showrooms of 14,000 or 15,000 square feet. And we started, we initially carried donuts, sandwiches, candy bars, lipstick, aspirin, and then everything else you've seen at Walgreens. Not very many people were carrying that in the grab and go fashion, meaning that you walk in real quick, grab it, you know, and then head on out. If you needed an A spanage because your child got hurt in a ballgame, you'd grab the A spanage and leave. More and more people started picking up our model and our front end, that's what we call our front end sales, started dropping. And over the last 10 years, we've seen a steadily decreasing number of front end sales as they go to the Dollar Tree, to the grocery store, to the convenience store that's on every corner. What this does with our model is it means that the profitable items that aren't state regulated, like the RX, started diminishing and our stores started losing money. This, this one in particular has been in the red for five years. The landlord that owns the store currently is in bankruptcy and cannot negotiate a lower rent, which is what we normally would do. We would stay in place because there's less disruption to the customer and to the store. We typically would stay in place and get a low rent and then just continue on for five or 10 years. Since they're unable to negotiate a rent and since we've invested 20 years in our customers and we feel very strongly about just dropping it and leaving, which is a no-no. They asked me to find a, find a location that would, that would suit a smaller building where we could take all of our SKU numbers that are high velocity SKUs and put them in there and get rid of the ones that don't sell and still have a full-service pharmacy in the neighborhood. And you gotta understand that Walgreens, when they asked us, it's like, you need to find a spot within a quarter of a mile, which is a very small amount of distance. And we were fortunate enough to find this, this empty parcel. And while it's not typically on the corner and it's, it's not got a lighted signal, I think that our customers would still be able to access it easily and we still wouldn't leave the trade area, which is important to us. So this is, this is, this decision's been happening for the last two years. We're at the point now where I think that we can pull the trigger on it if the council approves it. But our, our main goal is to stay in the neighborhood and not vacate and move two and a half, three miles down the road.
Okay, thank you. I will now open up to council for any questions or comments. And I'll start with you, Councilman Hoskins.
Thank you. I think, you know, everyone's concern was was the Fairfax and Marshall entrances and what the, what some of the people on those streets may, you know, their concerns. I'm glad to hear you, you're working with the people who live in that area. Sounds like there might be somebody on the call now who might have some, might have some thoughts too, but like, I'm, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that the people, the people in that area are, they're fine with it ultimately.
Through, through the chair, this is Planner Crowe to Councilman Hoskins. I think it might be appropriate if their traffic engineer talked about, I believe they stated that 90% of the traffic was going to come in off of 12 Mile and that about 5% would be equally distributed between Marshall Street and Fairfax Street. And even a percentage of that would actually be coming from the neighborhood. So if, if you wouldn't mind, could we have the traffic engineer kind of give the summary or confirm that?
Yeah, Terry, that would be Julie, and I believe she's on the call.
Yes, if she's on the call, we would love to hear from her.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Julie Kroll. I'm with Felicity Vanenbrink, and we did the traffic study for the site. And as Terry mentioned, we looked at the site access and the adjacent street traffic volumes to determine the projected traffic impacts on Fairfax, Marshall, and 12 Mile. When we looked at the site, we made the assumption, basically 90% of the site traffic would use 12 Mile Road with 10% of the traffic using, going to the north with 5% using Fairfax and 5% using Marshall. And we based it on how the traffic operated at 12 Mile Road. So in our study, we determined that the traffic was, there was enough gaps in the traffic to allow ingress and egress at the 12 Mile Road access so that vehicles that would be accessing the site would not be looking for alternative means of access via these neighborhood roads. So if they can easily get in and out on 12 Mile, then there's no reason to go north and south through Fairfax unless you live in the neighborhood to the north of the store, which we anticipate that some of the people that go to Walgreens will probably live in the neighborhood and either walk or bike or drive their car to go to the Walgreens store.
Okay, thank you. Did I also hear that you had someone that spoke to the residents? Could we hear what the responses were on that too before we go back to council?
So through the chair to Paul, I know that you had a petition of support that you met with the adjacent resident in northwest of, of your property that you're working on some details. And we did have a few neighbors that objected during the public hearing. But Paul, can you just summarize your, your outreach to the neighborhood, please, for the council?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Frank is on, but we'll, we'll absolutely have him present and prepared to speak at the, I believe the City Council meeting, it'll be the 26th, if I'm, 24, 26. But my, my summary of my discussion with Frank, because Frank actually, he's the developer. He actually got out there on the street and knocked on these doors with, I believe, his wife. And we did have six people sign the petition in support, including the house to the northeast, not the northwest. Northwest is the gentleman we're working with on the buffer and the fence. But they did knock on the doors. They did get six, six people to sign in support. And as Terry said, yes, there were an objection made by a gentleman that was like three or four houses to the north on Marshall. And so like, all I can tell you is we had six sign in support and we're actively working with a neighbor that initially raised some concerns to the, you know, joining us to the northwest. And that's about as good a summary as I can give you, but we can give a detailed summary at the next, at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'll come back to you now. Jason, did you have any more questions or?
Yeah, I have one more question, not about this in particular, but just in general. When, when do we typically require traffic studies? How is that done? I'm also thinking about the next item as well, but.
Well, through the chair, there are certain triggers on the size of development. But in, in the special land use requirements, if it lends itself or warrants itself to request a traffic study or a traffic engineer report, that's, that's when it's appropriate to do so. So typically, if there have a drive-through component or you're of a certain acreage or development standards, that would trigger it for sure. But council can always request that information through the special land use. And the Planning Commission many times does that before it even gets to you. So in this particular case, we asked them to get a traffic engineer involved as we anticipate these types of questions coming forth.
All right, thank you. And that's, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I definitely do like this. I like how they took our suggestions with the driveways and the additional buffer in the back of the store. A couple of questions that I have. Where would the garbage be located? Which part of the property?
I'll see if I, so on the west side, Councilman, west side of the building, you see kind of a rectangular shape that goes in at an angle to the west side of the, of the building.
Yeah.
For deliveries.
Yep.
And then the, the bay below that or south of that, that is where the compactor is located. And as they had indicated, this, this is not biodegradable food products. It's just for cardboard. And so those, both of those are located on the southwest portion of the site or the building.
Right, so further away from the-
Residents.
Residents. And, and this store is not going to be 24 hours, is that correct?
That is correct. This is Jamie. This is Jamie. It's the same hours as the existing store.
Okay. And then going back to the traffic study question, is there any reason to believe that people who are driving south, I'm sorry, north on Greenfield would pass 12 Mile, go to the next street, which is Edwards, make that left and then go back around? Even if they don't live in the neighborhood, just to avoid having to wait for the left turn at 12 Mile and Greenfield?
Julie, I don't know if you caught that, but.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the question. Can you repeat it?
So is there any reason to believe that people would want to bypass the, waiting for the left-hand turn at 12 Mile and Greenfield and go over to the next street, which is Edwards, make the left and then go through the neighborhood into the Walgreens? Is there a reason to, to think that that may happen?
That people would bypass if they're going westbound or eastbound?
If they're going northbound on Greenfield.
Oh. I guess they probably would only do it like once until they realize that the Walgreens had moved. Is that what you like when you, like their first opening? Is that what your concern is?
No. So if you're, if you're looking at, at a map, right, so you're driving on, currently the, the Walgreens is at the corner of Greenfield and 12 Mile.
Correct, yep.
So it's basically, it's moving three blocks west or two blocks west on 12 Mile. So is there any reason to believe that if somebody is driving north on Greenfield and they get to the intersection of 12 Mile and Greenfield, they can make the left-hand turn, drive a block and a half and get into the Walgreens? But would they then, would they try to avoid that left-hand turn? Drive further north to the next street and then essentially make a U-turn within the neighborhood to get to Walgreens?
I, I highly doubt that that would be an issue. You know, what we find now with traffic is that people put it in their phone and they follow what the phone tells them to do. So it would be a small percentage of drivers who would be looking to make, take some alternate route and go around and they would still have to make a left turn and cut through the neighborhood. And so it would be a very small fraction of, of drivers that would be doing that sort of maneuver. And I don't think it would be a significant increase or impact to the neighborhood traffic associated with this operation.
Okay, and then, and then even exiting the Walgreens onto, to 12 Mile and they're wanting to make the, if they're exiting, they wanted to make a left-hand turn towards Greenfield. Do the, do the traffic study look at that at all if that will, if they'll be able to make that turn out?
Yeah, and that's what I was saying before is that was like, we look at the, the projected queuing on these approaches to see if the traffic was going to back up into the site and people couldn't get out, then they're going to have to use these other two driveways. So when we looked at that, we saw that there was enough gaps in the traffic on 12 Mile that you're going to get minimal queuing. So you're looking at one to two vehicles max on that approach during the peak period. So there really was no issue with vehicles trying to make an egress left turn out of the site drive on 12 Mile.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks? Councilman Brightwell?
Thank you.
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
Having problems with the systems tonight.
Okay.
Terry, how, how many people, well, we set notices to the 350-foot radius for this property, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Our standard process is 100, 350 feet from the perimeter of the property plus any homeowners association that's registered with the city surrounding, surrounding the subject site.
Thank you. And then have we, and I don't know if this would be to the planner or the clerk, have we received letters of objection? And if so, how many?
Well, again, in summary, we've had the study session with the Planning Commission and the public hearing. We had a, a letter of support by six individuals in the community. The property owner that's on the northwest originally objected, but is not- Uh, the property owner that's on the northwest originally objected, but is now in favor with these mitigation issues. There was a landlord that owns two houses across the street on Fairfax that objected in general to this development. Um, and there was a gentleman that was five houses north on Marshall Street that objected. So overall, we've, we've heard from about 10 people with seven in favor and two against. I mean, that, that is, that's a, uh, I would say that, that was a pretty good response during our public comment period than we normally do get on, on other cases.
Thank you. And then, um, also, um, Terry, if they were to construct a, um, a decorative concrete fence, um, I noticed when we were, um, traveling in Ohio, it looks like there's a new concrete fence that's out there and I want to say it's, um, like panels, but they're decorative.
Right.
Uh, um, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, and those are, those are sound attenuation walls that now have, um, a stamp embedded in the concrete.
Yes.
And they paint them sometimes to look like faux stone or, or brick. So what I, what I want to mention here is you go around the city and there, we've had these concrete paneled walls that just have a brick imprint that are color-coded and it's kind of grayed and darkened over time. Uh, so our ordinance requires a five-foot, six-foot high masonry wall between non-residential and residential. Where we've had, uh, residential neighborhoods immediately adjacent to development, in many cases, the residents prefer a residential-looking fence as opposed to a concrete imprinted wall that some have, have, you know, derogatorily said are, reminds them of prison walls. And I believe what I heard tonight is that now the resident is looking for a maze, uh, more of a brick, uh, a brick wall. And so we always ask that the final approval of that design standard, subject to council's authorization, come to us. And this could be a block wall with a brick facing, which is a lot different and, and a more aesthetic than just a, a concrete poured wall that's got, uh, the brick stamp in it. So I think what we try to do is work with the residents immediately adjacent to and impacted the most by the development to find a, a good compromise. And I think that's what we're trying to work out here.
Okay, and then when it, with those, with reference to those decorative concrete, uh, walls, which I think were very nice, do we have any in the city? Cause I, I just think that should be our standard. They just looked really nice and it looked like if, like I said, it looked like they were panels, but they were concrete.
Right, and, and if you recall, a few years ago, um, we updated our, our fence and screening ordinance. So we have a lot of examples of nicer-looking fencing, fence types and, and screening walls that we can refer to.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm, I'm, I, I think my immediate concern with reference to this project is the residents in the area. Um, when I drove by the site, I just think it's too close to them. I think it's kind of in an awkward position. Um, you know, it, it is just too close to the residential area.
Do you, so? The only comment I'll make, um, councilwoman Banks, and should have just reiterated this in the beginning. The, the, um, southern 50% of the property was, is, is, originally was planned for a medical office building. And so, um, and then the remainder was going to be parking. So yes, this, uh, Walgreens does encroach, um, probably about 20% further north in the medical office building, but it's still within, within the corridor of office service, um, depth along 12 Mile Road in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Um, um, I'm, I am pleased with the flexibility of the developers and individuals that I've, I've heard from. And also, uh, they've taken into consideration the comments made by counsel last time. And, um, the, the tone that I'm hearing, they're very conciliatory. And, uh, before the gentleman mentioned neighborhood store, that was our, that was the tone I was getting from the presentation that they are really making this a more of a neighborhood, uh, uh, store, you know, entity. Uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, uh, and it, it serves a purpose. And that, that's, that's sometime, uh, my decision-making is normally driven by quantity, numbers. Uh, but I'm, I'm driving, I'm being driven now by the purpose of this particular, uh, location and the purpose that it's serving. Uh, and so the fact that they've gone out and, and, um, reached out to the neighbors, that has always been a, a driver for me. And just from my days of sitting on site plan, uh, I'm feeling comfortable with some of the things I would look for when I was on the, when I was on the site plan committee. So, uh, with that, I'm, well, obviously you can prob, perhaps get the tone in my voice, which way I'm, um, thinking about this. But I feel comfortable right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I, I won't prolong the conversation. Uh, the main thing has been said, uh, to make sure that we've been in touch with the neighborhoods and, uh, I feel comfortable with what's all been said. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, um, just one quick question, and I think you answered it last time when you presented. Um, this is to, um, uh, Mr. Schmidt, Schmidt. Uh, was Walgreens, when they've been paying the, the rent, uh, was it also, did they, did they also have to pay a percentage of the gross sales to the landlord? I, I believe you answered that last time. I'm just not sure.
Yeah, this is Jamie. In many cases, our leases are written up where if we're extremely successful, the landlord does get a percent of the sales, but, uh, you have to hit a certain sales volume and this store hasn't hit it in years.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Uh.
You're welcome.
Does, does anybody else have any comments or questions for this, uh, item, Mr. Mayor or anyone else? Okay, hearing Terry, is this gonna, I'm sorry, was someone gonna say something?
I, I was just gonna, um, if, if there was no other questions, say that this item will come back on April 26th for a public hearing. And I would just ask the applicant, when you finalize your wall details, to get that to us in advance so the council can review that at that time.
We will do that too.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next, uh, presentation. Terry?
Yes, uh, so, uh, this is a presentation discussion regarding special use requests and site plan review for proposed Chick-fil-A located at 28550 Telegraph Road. And again, um, through, with your permission, I'd like to have Mr. Bryce do the introduction. Then the applicant's team can, um, finalize the presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. So this is special land use case PSLU 21-0003 and site plan review request PSP 21-0003. Stationery GDP group on behalf of the owner, RPT Realty. Um, so this is located, uh, 28550 Telegraph Road. This is the east side of Telegraph between 12 Mile and the Northwestern Highway Service Drive. Specifically, it's that northwest corner of the site across or in front of Michael's and Pet Smart. Um, there's a small access aisle between, um, uh, the Chipotle and where the site is, uh, currently slated. Uh, the existing zoning is RS, which does allow restaurants outright. Uh, the special land use request here is to allow for a construction of a restaurant with a drive-through. The site plan request is to construct a 4,978 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through. Uh, next slide, please. This is a closer up of the site, so you can see it's kind of a further out area of the parking lot. There's that private drive aisle to the developments along the north. Um, next slide, please. The future land use shows, uh, regional mixed use. It's part of the Northwestern Highway corridor sub-area. And we have the current zoning, which is RS, like that entire, uh, corner on that side. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, here's the site plan. So, uh, we've been working back and forth with the developer on this. Um, specifically when we've been able to shift, uh, the restaurant to the east. And so we've been able to provide for 20-foot unobstructed access on the east and west sides. Um, so I know in particular, the city planner and the fire marshal had a lot of discussions about, uh, engineering this site. So it has maximum safety in mind. Um, so it does have substantial drive-through coverage around the building. Um, you will notice a, uh, seven-foot, uh, access to that private drive on the north. Um, again, that's for emergencies. Um, you, there's a small drive aisle on the right that goes to, uh, some dumpsters. They do have an outdoor seating area on the east side of the site, about six outdoor tables. Um, and they do have a pedestrian connection to Telegraph Road. They're actually putting in the sidewalk there along Telegraph. Um, next slide, please. Uh, here's a colored landscaping plan. So they do have pretty substantial landscaping coverage around the site, um, including several, uh, landscape islands in the parking lot. Next slide, please. Uh, we do have a photometric plan of the site. Next slide. Uh, we here's kind of a, a master, uh, plan of the site and a, a small pop-out key. This is showing the, uh, number of parking stalls that are going to be removed. Uh, this is according with the, uh, leasing that's proposed for this property. Uh, next slide. So, um, you know, the drive-through was, um, an issue that was discussed a lot at the planning commission level. I would say the other, uh, major concern that has been discussed is the site traffic flow of going in and out of the site. Um, so what they're proposing now, uh, utilizing both entrances to the site. One is the Northwestern Highway Service Drive, um, using that, uh, to go, uh, this map is oriented, uh, with east being up. So they'd be traveling east, uh, into the site. Um, and the stars are representing, uh, signs that will direct them to Chick-fil-A. So they would turn left down that aisle and then take that aisle along Telegraph to the restaurant. Um, and likewise at the site, um, the private access on the north side of the site, they'd be going east into it. And there would be signage that directs which aisle to go down. Um, that way we have better traffic control at the site. Um, uh, there's also some discussion of, uh, including additional stop signs. And I know they've been discussing this with the, the ownership group and they're completely open to that. Again, just for better site control. Slide, please. Uh, here's a perspective of the restaurant. Um, this would be looking at it from Telegraph roughly, uh, showing a canopy and the, uh, wide drive, uh, through area. Uh, next slide. Uh, here are some existing interior photos of the, uh, current Chick-fil-A model. Next slide. Uh, here's, uh, what a typical restaurant would look like. Uh, next slide. And here are the elevations, um, for the proposed restaurant. Slide. Uh, here's some, uh, elevations and perspective of the order point canopy. Next slide. And this is, uh, the patio plan showing the outdoor seating area as well as the, uh, bicycle parking. Slide. The floor plan of these sites. Next slide. Uh, so from here, uh, I would like to turn it over to Chick-fil-A's team. So we do have, uh, Justin Burke and Ellen Sally. So we've been talking to them since the beginning. We had a lot of pre-application meetings and a lot of meetings, uh, for and after planning commission. Uh, so Justin, uh, you can take it away.
Sure, thank you, Kyle. Uh, Justin Lurk, I'm a principal development leader for Chick-fil-A. And Madam, Madam President, members of the commission, we, we appreciate the time tonight. Thank you for allowing us to come in and just put this in front of you and, and pick your brains. And we're, we're excited about bringing our, our concept to the city of Southfield, um, and just adding to the great community that you all have. So, um, with that being said, I'll just give a few highlights of, of Chick-fil-A as a company. As, uh, some people may not know who we are or what we do, but, uh, we are a, a family-owned and led company. Uh, founder Truitt Cathy, um, you know, founded Chick-fil-A back in 1946. He actually opened a little diner that he served, uh, 24/7, uh, with the exception of Sundays. And he realized, man, you know, customer service is key. How can I, how can I duplicate this? How can I clone myself and have the customer service model, uh, front of mind? So that's, that's how the Chick-fil-A model was developed. And what I mean by model is all of our sites are locally owned and operated as a franchisee. And if you get selected, be a franchisee, you get one location. And that location has to be your sole, meaning you can't have another source of income. Um, and what that is intended to do is have all of our, uh, franchisee owner operators in the store six days a week, building the team, um, being part of the community, understanding and knowing our, our customers, uh, that come in day in and day out and, and just being kind of entrenched in, into the community. So, um, since 1946, we opened the first Chick-fil-A mall, um, Greenbrier Mall in Atlanta, Georgia. Kind of pioneered the food quarter, as you know it. There was no food in the malls prior to that first opening. And our growth model was malls from 67 to 86. And we opened up our first freestanding unit in 1986. Since then, we've been opening up what you see in front of you, which is a freestanding unit, um, where we can kind of embed more into the communities versus just in, uh, inside interior malls. So, um, several different awards that we've been known for as some of the, you know, most beloved fast food chain in history, um, great customer service, et cetera, et cetera. I won't, I won't dwell on that, but if we go to the next slide, um, you know, some of the things that we're known for is just the spirit nights. So partnering up with a local school or local community charity and the percentage of sales that night will go to that school or charity. So those are great fundraisers for the community. Uh, we, we love doing family night where maybe it's a daddy-daughter date or mommy-son date or special guest date. And you bring, uh, you bring your, uh, you know, child in and enjoy, you know, just one-on-one time with a warm, warm meal and a warm smile. So, um, you know, we pride ourselves on that along with our second mile service. And you'll hear my pleasure a lot because it truly is our pleasure to serve you as a customer in one of our locations. So if we go to the next slide, um, some of the numbers here, um, you know, donating over 1.7 meals to the shared, um, you know, shared table food program that we have to where we can deliver wholesome foods, uh, that may have not been utilized at our locations within a five, 10-minute drive time of each location. We've got a ton of our owner-operators participating in that, that program. Um, 27,000 different team members that have, uh, participated in a leadership academy over 925 high schools across the country, which is just fantastic. And then one stat that I'm, I'm really proud of is 75 million that's been donated to our team members, the ones working in each one of our locations to help foster, uh, secondary education for them, uh, higher education for them. And it was part of a, a surprise, uh, ceremony of just two weeks ago where 12 members, uh, across the country, team members were, thought they were going to a training. And it was a live Zoom call to where our, our president came on and awarded each one of them a $25,000 scholarship to higher education. So just, just need to give back to our team members, the ones that are working so hard to, to serve our customers and, uh, certainly really proud of that. And then obviously, um, you know, when we open up these restaurants, we're gonna, we're gonna bring in a lot of new, uh, jobs as well. Uh, typically on staff, anywhere from 70 to 100. I know it says 60 to 80 here. Um, but what we're seeing across our, our stores right now is anywhere from 70 to 100, um, jobs. And those would be a mix between full-time, uh, salary positions and hourly positions. And not to, not to mention the different trades that we'd bring, uh, bring in to help build, uh, build the, the store. So our, our main purpose is to, you know, to, to make a positive impact on all that income in contact with Chick-fil-A. We're just super excited to bring that to the city of Southfield. Uh, and we're here to answer any, any questions that you may have regarding the site plan as, as Kyle. Uh, and we're here to answer any, any questions that you may have regarding the site plan. As, as Kyle mentioned, we spent a lot of time uh, with Kyle, Terry and the fire marshal and the planning commission and making sure that we're, we're putting our best foot forward and, and bringing it, uh, bringing it to the community here. So here to answer any questions you all may have.
For the chair, before you open up to council questions, um, could we go back to slide thirty-one? And Justin, I, I'd like you to give more of an overview on, on the details that you worked out with the the double row ordering, uh, and picked up and your response to other stores that have opened up recently in the Michigan market, how you're dealing with COVID. And then specifically addressing all the concerns that were raised. Cause I think this, this is the fundamental diagram where the council understand all the little nuances that we work through this process.
Perfect. Yeah, that's, that's great, Terry. So if, if we kind of look at the, the micro view and just our building and the drive-through around our building, pre-COVID, we had two lanes coming in, as you see with the red cars. And you can order from two points. And then we would have one lane to where those two lanes would filter into one lane all the way around the building and pick up their food. Um, post-COVID, we started redesigning our sites to extend that second lane all the way around the building. So from the order point around the building to the pickup point. And you can see that's kind of an open lane in this, uh, diagram. And, um, if you, if you're familiar with any of our other locations, we have a similar layout where there's a two-lane all the way around in Northville, Michigan, that just opened in January. And then Shelby Township, Michigan, that also opened in January. The other two locations that we had opened prior to that, Allen Park and then Novi, Michigan, have two order points filtered down to a single lane, pick up the food at the window. So that the addition of that second lane from the order point around the building through the pickup window is really to give our owner-operators maximum flexibility. And what we're seeing them utilizing that second lane for is that if you're a, if you're a car at the pickup window, the, the red car at the pickup window, we'll call that car number one. If your car number one and you've got a fifty, sixty dollar order, because you're bringing food back for your whole family, typically what my orders are, got a big family. Um, but if you're car number one and with a big order and then car number two has a chicken, uh, chicken sandwich and fries and coke, we're delivering food back to car number two, car number three, car number four, car number five. And that outside lane allows the cars to pull around those in front of it and exit safely. Okay? So that's the micro view of how we changed our site and how this site is the latest and greatest design that we have. In addition to that, as Terry mentioned and Kyle mentioned in his presentation, we worked with them extensively to make sure that, um, emergency vehicles could access the site. So we've got a dedicated twenty-foot, um, lane. What you see here is page north, which is the, the eastern side of our site and page south, which is the western side of our site. To allow for emergency vehicles to get around and service that, uh, service that drive-through should there be an emergency within the drive. Okay? And then the private access drive that is, um, would be, would be north of us, which is planned, planned west here. Uh, the emergency vehicles could utilize that, uh, that access drive if they needed to get access to the north side of our building. Okay? So then, what do you, what do you see on the rest of this page? It's, it's pretty busy, right? So then you see some blue cars that would represent potential stacking throughout the parking field and drive aisles should the car spill out of the drive-thru. And we've worked with RPT, uh, the landlord here, who have also worked with some of the big box retailers. Um, and blessed this site plan. So this is a, um, this is a proposed traffic flow plan, right? The blue arrow and the red arrows would indicate incoming traffic into the center. And then how do we get them into the center and then to our site safely? And then the orange and the green arrows would represent, uh, once they're, once they're at our site and through the drive-through, you know, based on today's, um, reality, which most people are going through the drive-through. We know that COVID numbers are kind of spiking in, in Michigan right now, but that won't last forever, hopefully, right across our fingers. Um, but right now with everything filtering through the drive-through, this is, this is where the main form of our business is coming. Drive-through, our dining rooms are closed like many other restaurants across the state, across the country. Um, again, soon, hopefully that will, uh, change. But the orange line and the green line would represent, once you pick up your food in the drive-through, what is the safest exit route? And that's what we're showing here. Um, you see the stop lines indicated there, uh, stop signs indicated there. So as you're coming off of Telegraph Road, if you, if you're, if you're running, uh, heading northbound on Telegraph Road, you're likely going to be following the red arrow line to get to our site. Okay? If you're heading southbound on Telegraph, you're likely going to turn at the signal, uh, shown on this page and follow the blue line to get to our site. So spent a lot of time just looking at traffic flow, how to get people on and off the site safely. And then on and off of our actual leased premise safely, uh, to avoid minimal disruption to the rest of the tenants in the center. And then minimal disruption to the rest of the traffic flowing, uh, freely northbound and southbound on Telegraph Road. Um, but we hope, I hope that's, uh, that kind of explains the thought processes around what you're seeing on the screen.
And if I could just add, I mean, the planning commission drilled down to the fact that there weren't, um, curb chokes in some of the parking stalls adjacent to the northern access drive. And, uh, they worked with the property manager to, to have those installed so someone couldn't cheat and try to cut across.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, in the maximum period of, uh, their busiest time, they can accommodate approximately twenty-four cars in both lanes on their leasable area. The blue indicates an additional thirty-seven spaces of, of car stacking, not including some additional areas, uh, on the south of the site. And the red also represent, uh, additional stacking spaces. And we kept all the traffic located furthest away from the anchor stores, which are typically, um, the most underutilized or even utilized at all. If you look at aerials, you, you rarely see a, a car or two parked in this area. So we tried to accommodate all the concerns that I have raised, the planning commission raised, uh, and experience that we've seen with some of their newer stores opening up. And then, Justin, correct me, even if everything went well, this is like a spring twenty-two opening? Something about a year out or, or at least it's extended period before this would open up. And hopefully, as you had indicated, we won't be dealing so much with COVID and drive-through. Uh, you'll have, um, the restaurant open. And I think you told me that the most expedient way to get, uh, food pickup is actually order ahead and, and pull in the pickup spaces. So if you could just confirm that before we go to council on the questions, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Right now, our tentative timeline would be to start construction likely about a year from now. Um, there are some blackout periods that some of these major big boxes have, um, as, as relates to construction during the holiday season, and we don't want to impact that. Uh, so but by the time we get through the city process, start developing our construction documents, go out for bid and get a contractor on board, wouldn't have a lot of time to start construction this year, this calendar year, um, with those blackout dates. So likely we'll start construction on this store, um, sometime next spring when mother nature allows. And then that would probably put us for, uh, for an early fall twenty-two open.
Okay, um, ma'am chair, I just wanted to make sure we gave that over to you before you went to, uh, council questions. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, um, council, and I'll start with you, uh, Ari, uh, Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Um, you know, looking at the plan and, and everything, um, it looks like you've pretty much covered all, all the, all your bases and trying to figure out the best, uh, flow. I do know that there's plenty of space in this, uh, shopping center. And, um, I think this will be a great, um, a great addition. My only concern, which, you know, you can't help is trying to exit the parking lot, um, to the north of this Chick-fil-A building, onto Telegraph. But that's, you know, that's a problem even now. So, um, you know, there's really not much you can do with that. But I, I'm glad to see that we are starting to fill in some of these outlets and um, I'm definitely excited to have this come to the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Yes, thank you. I'm just, uh, in need of, of some clarification. Just wondering, uh, exactly where this will be located. I know we said it would be, um, there in the Tell Twelve Mall area, but where is it located?
Yeah, through the, through the chair. So if you know where Pet Smarts and Michael's is located in the development as well as Best Buy. So it's on the Alt Parcel, closest to Telegraph, across from Pet Smart and Michael's. If you were to look across the street, that's where Wendy's is located. So it's on the, um, southern part of the major development. Lowe's is in the middle of the development. Myers is on the north end. This is the southern third of the overall property.
Okay, and, um, okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at the traffic patterns here and just, I know you guys have given it considerable amount of thought with the blue and the green, um, they, looks like they are entering Chick-fil-A and then the orange and the red are exiting.
The, the orange and the green would be exiting traffic. And the red and the blue would be entering traffic.
Okay.
If, if you took this page and kind of rotated it ninety degrees clockwise, then it would, then it would follow the, the north and south, um, directions. But for a matter of showing everything on the page, we, we had to rotate this view for you. So that, that may be throwing you off a little bit.
Yeah, just trying to follow. I'll, I'll get it. But it's, and, and so this traffic pattern will, um, be in existence while there are other cars that are, um, you know, have customers frequenting the mall, correct?
Uh, yes. This would just be what we, what we feel to believe would be the entering and exiting route of traffic for our customers as it relates to how it intertwines with the rest of the mall.
Okay. So, um, will there have to be any type of, um, construction done in terms of, you know, guiding the traffic to go this way? Or Terry, can you speak to that?
Well, the, um, the area that's leasable will have the major reconstruction. There'll be some parking, um, spaces that will be removed to allow for this flow of traffic. I think if you see where the stars are located, those are additional directional signs that will, will educate people on how to best access the drive-through. And I know their model includes many of their employees out in, in the parking lots directing traffic as well until, until the, uh, patterns have been established. So there'll be, there's some internal improvements that are working with the management company um, to help with the flow as well as some of these internal, um, traffic signs that will help people understand the best way to access during peak and non-peak the drive-through.
Okay. Okay. No, I am, uh, very much in support of this, uh, development. Um, I'm excited and I just find it fascinating that you are, um, less than a mile away from one of your, uh, biggest competitors, Popeyes. So I look forward to, um, seeing how this, how this works out.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Banks?
Thank you very much. Um, um, this, this is a very popular restaurant that I know many people love going to. And, um, thank you for presenting your business model. It seems like you have, um, just a wonderful plan. Um, I am concerned though with the traffic. I know down the streets, there's a Popeyes. And right now the traffic, um, you know, it flows onto Telegraph Road. And the cars are just stacked and stopped. And, you know, we do have a, we do have a problem there. Um, on slide thirty-one, where the blue line is coming in and then around to the restaurant, who's to say that someone can't drive past, um, the GNC, pass Best Buy and try to sneak up, um, through one of the other lanes to get into the Chick-fil-A? What's going to prevent them from doing that?
Uh, nothing will, will physically prevent them from doing that. Uh, as Terry mentioned, you know, during, during grand opening, we'll either have associates or have a third party helping us, um, educate customers on the flow of traffic. And then again, as the stars indicated on this page, would represent directional signage to help educate, uh, customers on, on the appropriate way to get onto and off of our, off of our lot within the development.
Okay. And, you know, your location in Novi, I mean, I'm just amazed. I don't think I've ever been there where the traffic is not, again, backed up into the street. Um, on any day, any time, any hour, it's just, you can't even get into that restaurant. And I believe the same thing is in, can't remember if it was a Northville, um, property. You said that there were two entrances where you could order. Um, where on slide, is it, I think it's thirty-one, did you say? There's also going to be two pickup points? And where are those?
So on slide thirty-one that we're looking at right now, if you look at the red cars, you see two, like, two lanes entering our, our site, entering our drive-through. And where those two lanes stop, those would be the dual order point. So you could order from two, both of those lanes. And then it would filter down into one lane and wrap around the building to the pickup window. Okay? Um, so if your car, like, pick up window with a large order, then our associates would come out of the pickup window and deliver food to car two. If you just have a smaller order, car two would then pull around car number one and exit through that, through that additional, uh, pull-around lane, if you will. Does that make sense?
Yes, um, cause I thought I was told you were going to have two pickup windows. Now you're just going to have one pickup window?
If, if I can clarify, because I made the statement, Justin.
Okay.
On, on, on the top of your store on this map, but it was really the east. There's, there's a canopy that has two drive-through lanes and there's two ordering windows. Then there's a secondary outer drive-through lane during peak operation that should, should, should it need, you're going to come around on the, the bottom part of this map. But on the western side, there's another canopy that covers two lanes. And it's in that area that is, Justin said, whether it's one lane and people pull out or two, two lanes during peak time, that, uh, food will be delivered to potentially two rows underneath a canopy. And then there's an additional twenty feet emergency access escape outside of that. So that's where potentially at the, at the, the peak of lunch hour or peak of dinner, there's two ordering lanes that can flow directly to two pickup lanes that are both served by canopy and people delivering the food. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, that's correct. And talking with our grand opening supervisors and, um, existing operators, utilizing that second lane or two, you know, to, as a, an additional pickup lane, what they call that is a pro move, right? Um, so a pretty experienced operator, it, it takes a different, uh, mentality on the inside it, um, to be able to package food and deliver to both lanes. So what most operators are utilizing that second lane for is a pull-around lane. Meaning deliver, deliver food to just those cars in lane one and then pull around. But as, as the owner-operator maybe gets their feet underneath them, uh, and become more experienced, as Terry mentioned, there, that second lane is a maximum flexibility lane to be utilized by the owner-operator as they see fit. So down the road, if they're experienced and, and they would have that capability to deliver food to lane two under that stampy at the pickup window. So just one pickup window, but potentially two lanes to deliver food to. Does that make sense?
Um, yes, yes, it does make sense. But I'm just, I don't know. Just based on the, um, traffic and all of your other locations because of the popularity of this restaurant, um, I'm very concerned about the traffic, um, and i- in this area, um, Telegraph and Twelve Mile Road, um, is already very is already very fast-paced and I can just see a backup, you know, in this whole mall area where your blue lines are. You've got the car dealerships that um, park their cars there all the time. You've got the Best Buy that um, can get pretty busy. Um, Terry, did you ever, um, did the planning commission ever think about? And I'm not sure how to say this, like cutting the parking lot in half and having like the parking lot closest to the stores? Let their patrons park there and then the lots closest to Twelve Mile, you know, some type of a zigzag around there instead of up and down?
Well, Ms. Banks, I, I, I've, I have researched extensively the Novi and Northville sites and neither of them have this much stacking space immediately available and adjacent to them. There's over six hundred linear feet along Telegraph internally before you even go to the east-west parts. And if you look at the aerials and the practicality, most of the customers that are going to be coming to these major anchor stores are going to be parking on the easternmost half of the property. Then that, that's why I, I believe that this flow works because even probably in, at the Christmas holiday rush, you're not seeing cars parking on the perimeter uh, closest to Telegraph Road. So we, we spend an awful lot of time to ensure that there's more than enough stacking space, even in the worst-case scenarios. And we feel that unlike the other two sites that either have only one um, ordering pickup or funnel down to one pickup lane, that um, that we can more than accommodate the uh, quote-unquote rush of drive-through during peak hours here. And we, I know that the applicant has worked very closely with the management company. We had the same concerns about the dealership. There was a comment about um, the front bumpers of cars overhanging on that um, Southern Drive and they have proposed to put new wheel chokes in there to keep those bumpers two feet off. One of the planning commissioners observed that there was no um, barriers on the north side as people entered that could try to cut across those parking spaces. They've uh, included those um, wheel chokes. And then there was a comment from one of the commissioners who about um, when you're going southbound on Lowe's and turning around and they've identified all the existing stop signs. So we've spent it, an enormous amount of time trying to resolve all these legitimate issues that you raise up, raise and other council and and the planning staff and the planning commission. Um, we work very closely with the fire marshal to make sure that number one priority was emergency access and fire suppression and EMT can access the site even during peak hours. And there's never going to be a situation where I can say with a crystal ball that we may not have a problem here, but unlike Popeyes, who only has one drive-through and, and, and only their site themselves, this has uh, an enormous amount of, of internal stacking that's separated from the main drive-on Telegraph Road.
Okay, thank you. I think all my questions have been answered.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, Terry, um, how many parking spaces are being eliminated uh, from that, that site? And, and, and is that site in jeopardy of um, becoming um, having too many, not, not, not having those parking, parking spots based on the, the site plan?
That, that's not a concern of ours, I can tell you. I think there, I, I don't, there was a slide that showed, maybe it's the slide prior, maybe we can go back to slide thirty. So a hundred thirty-eight spaces are gonna be removed with twenty-three new additional spaces added. So there's a net loss of a hundred and fifteen spaces. There are thirteen stalls that, according to our ordinance, if there are stacking there, um, they're considered unusable, but, but there's, but they'll still remain there for other, other periods of when, when there's not great demand for drive-through. And when we look at the total parking counts, all the development that's on the site, plus the new development, what's, what's were removed, they still have more than sufficient amount of parking. This development was, was, was built back when standards were uh, exorbitant amount to today's standards. And we think it's overparted as it is. Uh, the addition of this new development is actually creating more green space than, than it is currently under its existing conditions.
Okay, no problem. It, it's obviously um, there's a, a plus and a minus. When you do something like this, it, it just came to mind. Uh, with respect to volume, what is the uh, estimated wait time and what is the estimated volume for this location? Wait time being if I play, place an order, how long estimated, how, when I get my order? Your standard typical order?
Yeah, from the, from the time you place an order until the time you pick up your food, um, our, our traditional goal and, and what we're executing across the country is around ninety, ninety seconds from order placement to order pickup. So just, just a few minutes.
Okay, alright. Um, without getting out, uh, giving out your proprietary information, what, what is your, uh, from a, your estimated volume for this particular location? Uh, ba- based on your national average or regional average? What, what, what are you looking at?
Um, based on our national average, I would, I would say this would fall in line with the national average, if not slightly above the national average. I can't really go into specific numbers per se, but, but yes, I, we, we feel like this one will, this location and why we targeted Southfield in general is a, you know, just a great community for, you know, for, for us. So I feel like it'll operate a, a, a little bit above our national average.
Okay, alright. Um, the other thing, just um, is you're, you're in the um, obviously uh, automotive area. And most of my friends know, I know a lot of this unnecessary information like trivia. It's my understanding that the Ford uh, Hakeville plant kept uh, Chick-fil-A alive during its early days and that when they closed that plant in Atlanta, the, the, the original, the uh, founder of Chick-fil-A bought the last four Taurus off that line because that plant kept him alive when he was uh, building his uh, empire.
I don't know the specifics about that, but true, it was a, an interesting man and would certainly was given back. It was definitely giver and gave back to the community in many, many different ways.
Yeah, it was true. I think he, he got, he, he, he uh, purchased the last Taurus off that land, that land, uh, when Florida, um, at, at the L M, at the Atlanta Assembly Plant for the Taurus there. So um, okay, well, that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Madam President, sorry, I was messing with the mute button again. Um, thank you, uh, Justin, for that presentation. Very thorough. And um, I'm excited about the whole proposition of this taking place. Excuse me. And I, I ju- just wanna say for those who may not already be fans of this restaurant, um, I've seen the model because I go to Novi quite often to, um, to get some, so. And, and it really works. I mean, it's, it's a very well put together uh, process. And the wait times, as uh, Mr. Brightwell asked about, is uh, um, are very good. It, it looks like it's very busy and cluttered. I mean, it is busy, but it looks like it may take a long time. But the, the way that they have it set up, um, I have uh, very few reservations about uh, this whatsoever, if any. Uh, so I would say um, thank you for looking and selecting Southfield uh, as a place to locate. Um, I think this is something that we can make happen, of course. Um, but I will tell you, um, Justin, that I will, when you come back or whoever comes back uh, to talk to us at a later date, I do wanna just hear a little bit about uh, the company's position on diversity, equity and inclusion as well as what it is that the um, company will be doing in terms of making sure we're hiring uh, people in our area, local folks, so that uh, you know, we can increase our uh, employment here in the city of Southfield. But I do, but, but uh, but uh, again, like I said, overall, I don't have uh, many if any reservations at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, and, and thank you, Justin, for the, uh, the presentation. Um, and I just kinda wanna pick up where actually Council, uh, Councilman Cruz left off. And I too wanna, I would like, love to hear about uh, what you guys do as far as fo- fostering uh, diversity and inclusion uh, at Chick-fil-A. Um, I know there's been a lot of things uh, over the years about um, some of the causes that Chick-fil-A has supported. Um, a lot of the causes have come out to be uh, uh, anti-LGBT. Um, and I actually be curious to know, I know that there's been, I know there's been talk of them uh, no longer supporting like uh, anti, anti-gay uh, uh, organizations. I, I, I don't know if, could you talk more about that?
Are, are you speaking, are, are you asking me to address that now? That the question?
Uh, if you can.
Sure. Um, you know, I, I know our focus for donations right now, you know, we're focused on homelessness, hunger, uh, and education. Those are our three main focuses. Um, I know there's been talks about, um, you know, some of the contributions that were made in the past and, you know, looking deeper in, into that and feeling like s- some of those were anti-LGBT uh, causes. But again, you know, the, the focus of our donations and, and our cause to kind of better the communities or hunger, um, homelessness and, and education. And um, all of our employees should be, should be local, um, you know, and hiring, following all hiring practices. And at the end of the day, we're a restaurant and we service millions and millions of customers across the country, all walks of life and nationality and uh, sex, religion, um, race, et cetera. And our main goal is to make a positive impact on all those that come in contact with Chick-fil-A. Um, so you know, we're, we're gonna greet them with warm smile and a warm meal, and that's what we're here for.
And have you been doing things to kind of foster that since then? Um, you may or may not have the answer now, but foster more inclusion, particularly with the, with the, the gay community?
I, I don't know how to answer that. I don't know how to answer that right now.
Um, as far as your um, some of the things that you have, and as far as com- uh, su- supporting the community, uh, just as a whole, um, you know, doing like the um, the, having a, a charity come in, for example, and, and you know, they can, you know, a per- a percentage of the purchase that day, um, you know, I can help that charity. Uh, do you, is there any certain, I mean, I know you kind of listed like for homelessness and stuff like that. Are there beyond, are there any criteria? Are there anything that? Do you have it like for, if it's in the, if, for, so for example, if we have it here in Southfield, is it just Southfield organizations? Are they just people in the metro area?
So, so that's really, each, each, each location is individually owned and operated by our franchisee. Um, and, and the, the charities in which we, we partner with on Spirit Night is really, you know, based on demand for the local area. So we're not, we're not saying no to one charity and yes to another. It's just all depending on what the demand is in that area and uh, that local owner-operator kind of partnering with the, the local organizations.
Um, like everyone else, um, or most, most of us, I, I too also have concerns about the traffic. Uh, and it's not necessarily the, the Chick-fil-A's fault. Um, I mean, it's just that location, I mean, even right now, it's, there are some issues. Um, particularly um, on, on slide thirty-one, where the green and the blue, um, where they're coming in and out, I mean, right there and even further down where the Meyer, where the Foot Locker is, um, that, that interests as well. One of the concerns that I have had to deal with in my other job, um, is when people are making, um, they're leaving out of um, the mall and going, making a right onto Twelve Mile, I mean, onto Telegraph. Um, there are people who are making a left, um, you know, making a left around the island, also onto Telegraph. Um, and there's been a lot of issues with, um, some people almost getting into accidents there. And that's, um, that's kind of my concern here with a lot more traffic and a lot more volume of cars. And I'm not sure if someone could speak to that?
I, I do. Justin, if I could, what I would suggest, I don't know if you have a traffic engineer as part of your team today, or you could do some research with, I think Ellen, talk to MDOT. And maybe, maybe bring those, those responses to these concerns to the, the regular meeting.
Sure.
Um, Councilman Hoskins, the, these are all concerns that we have raised. As you know, MDOT uh, controls um, Telegraph Road and the design and the signalization and all that is designed on a certain um, level of volume of, of traffic. And I know this comes up every time there's a new development. I would be surprised if they didn't say that this is not even a blip on um, on their, their overall traffic because over the last five years, traffic volumes have come down overall. We know that Telegraph and Twelve is one of the most busiest intersections in the state and there are accidents to play that out. So I'm not diminishing any of these concerns, but I would rather have the experts um, respond to some of these concerns so you can make a, a better informed decision at the end of the day. So Justin, I would ask your team to reach out to MDOT and specifically with um, the anticipated daily traffic, the peak volumes, the in-and-out as proposed here and see what they have to say. And then trying to speculate at this, at this stage of our, of our discussion.
I, I know that'd be, that's like one of my main concerns, even with, I mean, I'm not sure, uh, if, Justin, if you know, at the other locations and, and, and um, in Michigan at the Novi or Northville, cuz even with, so in this picture, like Terry said, with the, the blue cars, I mean, even right here, there's thirty-seven. And then there's twenty-four in the Chick-fil-A. I imagine there's gonna be more than, um, there'll be more cars than that. I, I'm not sure if you know, like typical volume uh, of cars at those other locations?
Yeah, we do. And what we're seeing today with all dining rooms kind of closed across the state is if you're a consumer, your choices are kind of limited to drive-through, right? And you know, with Chick-fil-A being a shiny new penny on a few locations within uh, the Detroit metro area, kind of call that the, the perfect storm, right? We're, we're opening, COVID hits, we're shiny new penny, all restaurants are closed for dining. So if you're gonna go to a drive-through, let's, let's try the new, you know, the shiny new penny. So, um, but to your, to answer your question, uh, Mr. Hoskins, yes, we, we do see average transactions across the other stores in the market. Um, i- i- I think that was your specific question, right? And then what, what do we, what are we seeing for an average stacking? And speaking with many of the, you know, the other operators in the market, um, for the most part, all, all traffic is contained within the site. I know, no, Novi's a little bit different. And I, I know Terry mentioned this one's, this one's quite different from the Novi site because of all the internal um, queuing and stacking capacity. So as you mentioned, the red cars on our site, the thirty-seven in the blue. If you count the, the red lines, which we didn't even count that, or extend the blue up towards Foot Locker, you know, you're quickly over a hundred car stack. So we have looked at this, um, uh, many different ways to make sure that we're, we're being as diligent as we can to not impact traffic on Telegraph Road.
And just, you know, this is Ellen Sully with GPD Group. We're the ones that put together these exhibits. We did reach out to MDOT and they did not require a traffic study um, when we sent them our site plan. We will reach out for some more feedback prior to the next meeting. But MDOT does have jurisdiction over Telegraph Road and that, um, and the intersection, so that signalized intersection you're speaking of. But at the time, they did not require a traffic study for this site.
And, and the other thing, just to remind everyone, I know it's obvious, but there's no new curb cuts. So there's no direct access to Telegraph for this site. There are, they are utilizing the internal There are, they are utilizing the internal service drives and curb cuts that already exist. And that actually provides for better stacking than in some of the other locations that don't have is the depth of, 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 of underutilized parking areas to use the stacking. Because believe me, I beat up on these guys plenty, and, and Justin will attest. I've been out to both those other sites. I've counted cars. And, you know, we, we work very closely with them. I think this is the sixth or seventh iteration on, on traffic flowing in drive-through. And it's not that you got, your, your comments are, are, are legitimate, but, um, we have spent an awful lot of time on this one issue.
I believe you. Um, and I'm sure, uh, I mean, I believe you. I know you guys have been working hard on this. I mean, I can tell by the, the work that's gone into this graphic and, uh, the presentation, but, you know, and it just what, just what most things on, um, on Telegraph, I mean, I'm, I mean, like I say, right now, right this second, it's problems with traffic. So you put on like a popular, a popular restaurant like Chick-fil-A, you know, it, it does like, you know, it does conjure images, uh, like even worse, you know, worse, uh, situation, uh, potentially on Telegraph. Um, that's, th- those are all the questions I have now, but I do want to hear more about what you're doing for, uh, fostering diversity and inclusion, um, within, uh, Chick-fil-A. Uh, particularly if you've done anything, um, for, uh, for the LGBT community. I'd like to hear that, uh, the next time you come before us.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's all of our questions. I too am excited about the opportunity for Chick-fil-A to come to Southfield. Thank you for, uh, looking into, uh, opening a business here. Uh, all of the concerns were asked, and, uh, hopefully when you come back, we'll have answers. Um, so, next steps, we'll have the public hearing if, if, uh,
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just have one other question. I'm looking now at the bl- at the blue cars and the red cars. Are the red cars merging in with the blue cars?
So the red cars are just showing the cars that would be within our drive-through lanes on our site. And then the blue cars would represent what the, what the traffic flow would look like off of our site. The red line would merge into the blue cars as well. That, that red line and the blue line merged to show the flow of traffic to get to our site, to get into our drive.
Yes, but are they merging into one lane or are there two lanes?
They would merge into one line, where the red line and the blue line.
Do you have any other, uh, uh, are, are, do you have any other restaurants where the traffic merges like that?
Um, I mean, there, there would be examples all across the country, you know, where the, this situation is not uncommon, where we do like a carve-out of a, a shopping center, whether it's the Lowe's or a Home Depot or Kohl's or a Target, you know, here it's just a bunch of other retailers. But this is not uncommon for us to carve out of a, a, a parking lot and, and develop a new, new location.
Yeah, I, I've been, I've been to quite a few Chick-fil-A's, but I haven't seen that where the, we, where you have one traffic flow of cars actually merging into line with another. I didn't know if this was representing two lanes, um, but you have them merging into one line. Okay. Uh, hmm, okay. That's, that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Pleasure.
I, I do like the control signs or directional signs. I like to call them wayfinding to the Chick-fil-A. That's really going to be helpful, uh, with traffic coming in as well. So, but anyway, our next steps, Terry, is, uh, the public hearing?
Yes, they'll be back on April twenty-sixth for the public hearing.
Okay. Um, did anyone else have any comments on the call? Okay, hearing none. I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, thank you. Hearing none. We'll see you on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Terry, our next item is the, uh, rezoning request for Bell's Event Studio located on, uh, Ten Mile Road.
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Next slide, please. Uh, so this is, uh, Bell's Event Studio, um, on behalf of the owner Baba Sammy LLC. It's located at two four six two four West Ten Mile. It is located on the northeast corner of West Ten Mile and Groden Drive. Existing zoning is, um, Education Research Office. They need to zone to B two for their proposed banquet facility and a special land use to allow for the event center as a place of assembly. And then finally, a site plan for, um, some improvements on the site. Next slide. So if you recall, this is, um, this building was a former bank that's been empty for several years. And our department has entertained many different scenarios, uh, for this site, but, uh, nothing that has stuck. And Ms., uh, Tiffany Bell and her husband, um, are longtime residents of Southfield. She has a photographic studio, um, that she'd like to relocate to this place. And they'd like to open up a small event center for seventy-five to a hundred people, uh, as banquet. And I will let her, um, describe a little bit more about her business model. But this would be breathing new life into a building that's been vacant for several years. Next slide. Uh, so the, um, master plan is technology corridor subarea. This is, uh, supportive of those type of uses. Next slide. Uh, existing ERO, they need to, um, rezone to B two, but the B two is consistent with the, uh, zoning to the north and east of the site. Next slide. And, uh, they, um, will be upgrading the site with pedestrian connection, a bike rack, landscape screening of their parking lots on Groden Drive and on Ten Mile Road. And then, um, some minor improvements to the exterior of the building. Next slide. This is the, uh, floor plan of the, um, bank building as, as it's being converted to the photographic studio and office space with, um, the banquet facility that can be, um, either small scale or enlarged to seventy-five to a hundred people, depending on what the needs are of the client. Next slide. Uh, this is the exterior of the building. Next slide. And with that, Ms. Bell, um, through the chair's permission, if you could just, uh, tell a little bit about yourself, some background, why you chose this location, and then a little bit about your proposed business model, before we open it up to questions.
Sure. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to review our business. I own Bell Events Studio along with my husband Corey Bell. And we have, well, first of all, I've had a photography business since two thousand eight. And I primarily do photography on location. I've done a lot of photography at Burke Park, Historical Park, and around the city of Southfield, as well as other areas. And as I'm doing my photography, I've had quite a few clients ask me, because they're doing photography for different situations, do I know of any event spaces, um, where it's holding, you know, their popular event? Because, you know, I'm doing photography all around. And I said, and they were asking particularly in the Southfield area, and I said, you know, I don't really know of anything that's small and intimate, and that's kind of what they were inquiring about. And so as I, I was getting that question more and more, I started, um, talking to my husband about it and saying, hey, I think there might be a need, um, for an event space. And I had been thinking about my photography from just on locations to an actual space. I think we could possibly merge these two businesses together. And we knew that Southfield was where we would want to be, because we both are residents of Southfield. I've, you know, lived here for majority of my life. I went to Braceletory Elementary, Levy Middle School. I graduated from Southfield High. My children are both, um, in Southfield Public Schools. And so we love the community, we love the city, and so we felt like this would be a great space for us to have our business. And so we put a business plan together and started looking for locations. And, you know, it was a pretty difficult, because we really didn't want to be in a strip center. We wanted to, um, in a standalone building. And we wanted to have a space that was a really elegant, upscale environment that I could, you know, do my photography. But also, you know, an intimate space for people that had, like, a small wedding or reception or retirement. Um, and also a space that we could host for meetings as well. Um, so we looked around and looked around for different spaces. There wasn't a lot out there, um, until we found a facility and we thought, saw that it was for lease. Or we worked with the owner of the facility to lease the space. And so we felt that this would be a good space for us, because it was in a retail area already with other business, like businesses. And so we felt that it would work for this particular business. And so that's why we picked this particular location. And we just felt that, um, again, we wanted to stay in the city, of course. This is where we live. It's only ten minutes away from our home. And we just felt that it would be a perfect, you know, fit for us, you know, within this community. And so we decided to, um, partake on this particular building. Um, we did go through the building. We saw that it did not need a lot of changes to it, which was even better for us. And we decided that this would be a great space, um, for our, you know, event business and for the photography studio as well.
So, through the chair, yeah, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, I'll start with you, uh, Councilwoman Morris.
Thank you. Uh, I have no questions for Ms. Bell. Mrs. Bell, I am excited about, uh, this project. And, um, uh, I'm looking forward to perhaps visiting your business when you get up and running.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, no, I have no questions. Um, it sounds like, uh, um, wonderful development for this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I have no questions. And, um, I, I, I look forward to this, to this development. Uh, but I do have a question for Terry. Terry and/or who have put the package together. Uh, you know, prior to COVID, uh, when we get, we'd get these, I would sometimes jump in my car and just go take a look. But if it's not too, if it's not too cumbersome, uh, whatever, and not too expensive, that whenever we, we pop up with locations, can we get an aerial so I can just get a, a good proximity of these locations, not only me, but for the whole council? Because when I'm reading through, I do have, I have a slight understanding of the location. But if we had a ver- aerial that was popped into the package, I would get a better understanding prior to, you know, coming to the meeting. Nothing that would be cumbersome or expensive.
Yeah, we, we can do that. I, I, we, this is an aerial that you're actually looking at, but we can expand out to more of a bird's eye view on, on our introductory slide that would be part of your packet. That, that shouldn't, shouldn't be too difficult to do.
Okay, yeah, in, in the introductory package, that'd be, that's what I'm reading in preparation for the meeting. And that's where, prior to COVID, I would sometimes just jump in my car and, you know, go take a look. But now, I don't, I don't get anything to, to the actual meeting.
And, and, uh, and, and just, this is a plug, because we have the internet, interactive planning map that you can, you can pull up and see development that is pinned on any active cases anywhere in the city. Uh, you could say, hey, I live in this neighborhood. There's a couple pins nearby me. You can click on that and it'll show you the elevation, the site plan, the landscaping plan, and a little bit of background that, hey, this is in the planning commission stage, or this is in the council stage. So I just encourage again the public and as well as the council to utilize that site, because we keep that updated to all current projects. But we can certainly, we'll take your, um, suggestion at heart and include an aerial as part of your package.
Okay, that's fine. But then true, I'm, I'm glad to be educated on that other stuff, too. So, well, just keep me informed. I don't, I don't mind, you know, reading or learning. So, uh, whatever you got that keeps me informed, I, I would appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
Um, no questions whatsoever. It sounds very interesting and, uh, you know, I'm excited to see, uh, this come to fruition. So, uh, congratulations. And, uh, well, I don't know, I won't say that, but I'll say, I think that this will work. And, uh, we can figure this out to make this a very successful project. So, uh, thanks for your presentation, and, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Uh, I too am looking, uh, forward to this getting going. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yep, no questions for me either. Um, I think this is a, a great project and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing the final product. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it is a great project and much-needed, uh, event studio is needed here in the city of Southfield. So if this goes forward, I'm sure you'll do well. But thank you for, uh, considering Southfield.
Through, through the chair, be, just before we leave this topic, Ms. Bell, can you just, um, uh, review your proposed hours of operation for, um, the council? Because that's part of our special land use review.
Sure. Um, our hours of operation will be open, um, Monday through Thursday from eight AM to eight PM. And that's provided if someone books the space for an event. And on Fridays and Saturdays will be open from eight AM to midnight. And on Sundays will be open from eight AM to ten PM. And also that is only during when a private event is scheduled.
And then, um, the other thing that you had mentioned at the planning commission, uh, should, should a private venue come in and not utilize your services, you will have an onsite manager during, during events to make sure everything is closed down properly and nobody's, um, lingering in the parking lot? Because there was some concerns from neighbors about potential, uh, noise, noise issues.
Right, absolutely. There will be, um, someone from the Bell Event staff on the premises from the time that we open the doors or the, whoever event is going on at that time, all the way until the last person leaves for that event, from that event.
That's all, madam chair. Go, oh, mayor has some questions?
Yeah, I have, uh, uh, Ms. Bell, this is Ken Cyber, mayor. Um, I, hello, um, I, I, I really think you, um, you've hit on something. I think there is a, a need for this. Uh, I have driven past that old Standard Federal Bank. Um, I think they've been closed a good ten years and just been waiting for somebody to come along that wanted to do something with it. So, uh, I'm glad, I'm glad for your interest. My only question is, um, how, um, what do you think would be the, um, maximum, uh, size of a, an event? Uh, the building is not that large, but I think there is a need for a small event space.
Yes, absolutely. Um, the maximum people that would be in the event space is ninety-nine or less. We really wanted to cater to a smaller event. This is not for like if someone's having a big wedding or a big party for a hundred, two hundred, that's not the influence of this particular space. We really want to cater to more intimate affairs.
Um, my other question, um, uh, has to do with, um, uh, will you be, uh, will, will that, do you have a kitchen there or, um, uh, uh, um, or will people just bring in their own, uh, refreshments or food?
So the way, um, the refreshments and food works is that there is a small kitchenette in the back of the space, and that is only used to prepare your food. There's a refrigerator there, there's an ice maker. But that is strictly for just bringing food that's already prepared, already cooked, um, to the space. So the, yes, they will be hiring their own caterers and they can bring in already-prepared food for their.
Well, uh, uh, good. That, that was really the concept of Noah's, uh, Event Center that's larger and, um, unfortunately out of business, but they did not, they had a, a kitchen only for serving, not for preparing food. All right, those are my questions. Um, I hope this goes forward. All right, those are my questions. Um, I hope this goes forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so Terry, this will come back to us on the 26th as well?
That's correct. You have a full agenda again.
Okay, for a public hearing. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Our next presentation also is regarding a rezoning request and site plan review. This is for the new Soul, Soul Garden. Okay, go ahead.
Yep, that's correct. Next slide, please. And I just want to remind the council that the presentation, um, and review will tie in with your item 11, which is also the vacation of the consent judgment. But instead of repeating things twice, we're going to give you one overview of the proposed development now. I'll discuss the zoning and site plan requests and then, um, um, Ms. King will, will talk about the consent judgment. So if you, as you're aware, uh, the new Soul, uh, restaurant, group of restaurants, um, was approved, um, recently in the last couple of years. Uh, they had originally planned on building a freestanding market on the rear of their property. The former, um, Copper Canyon has been vacant for over seven years. They, they saw this as an opportunity for greater visibility of their group of businesses, but also to pro- protect their investment. And, uh, again, this is on Northwestern Highway between Bell Road and Telegraph Road. Existing RMU, which is multiple family high-rise that has that consent, uh, judgment. They would need to, um, rezone if the consent judgment is vacated to B3 general business to allow for this market. And then there would be, um, the complimentary site plan review of the site itself. Next slide. Uh, so again, everybody, I think on the council is familiar with the former Copper Canyon. Next slide. Uh, existing regional mixed use is on the future land use plan, so supports rezoning to B2. Next slide. And, um, this is the current and proposed zoning of the site. Next slide. And, uh, here is a detailed landscape plan that shows landscape screening and buffering of the parking lot to Northwestern Highway and the internal service drive. They also have made, um, some pedestrian connections to the existing rest, group of restaurants. Uh, that, um, they, they're hoping that their patrons might, might go to the market first and then, and then restaurants later or vice versa. So there is pedestrian connections, uh, all the standard requirements of the site and, and cleaning up the, uh, existing building. There'll be a slight additions to square off the footprint, but for the most part, they'll occupy, uh, the existing facility that copper, the former Copper Canyon had occupied. Next slide. Uh, again, this is just more detail on the landscaping. Next slide. These are the building elevations. It has a similar architectural style, coloring and materials as their group of restaurants. Next slide. The interior floor plan. Next slide. And then, uh, again, um, I, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant and the representatives, Ms. Lazarus, to talk about the business plan, why you chose the site, what you plan to do. And then we'll answer questions specifically on the zoning and the site plan before we go to the consent judgment. Ms. Lazarus?
Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much. Um, good evening. My name is Rebecca Lazarus and I represent, represent my client and the real estate developer SLT Holdings. Thank you, President Taylor, the Honorable City Council and Mayor Cyber for allowing us the opportunity to come before you tonight and present this exciting Asian market development for Southfield. The site plan before you tonight is the second phase to the New Soul Plaza development located at 27522 Northwestern Highway. As you know, this is the former property known as the Copper Canyon and it has been vacant since 2014. We do look at this as securing, uh, the value of the New Soul Plaza next door. And my client and longtime Southfield business owner, Young Yi of SLT Holdings is very excited to begin this redevelopment into an international upscale Asian grocery store. And it will be named New Soul Market. The market will be on the scale of a Nino Savagio's, a Plum Market and a Trader Joe's as a standalone, but will have an international Asian twist to it. This will be the sister building and business to the New Soul Plaza family of restaurants, DeBac, the Korean BBQ, Jinji and Mio Mi, the dessert cafe. The market will have a similar look and feel as New Soul Plaza, both interior and exterior. Materials will be of the same quality and we will follow a similar palette, color, a color palette to give the market and the area a unified upscale inviting appearance for our visitors and travelers along Northwestern Highway and the very busy M10 and I696 corridor. Um, just wanted to touch a little bit on the business plan. With the opening of the market, we anticipate generating approximately 40 to 45 new local jobs. And as a reference point, New Soul Plaza Restaurant created over 50 new jobs pre-COVID, unfortunately. But we are on the track to get back to those numbers again. On the site plan, we would like to bring your attention to a few features that may not be readily noticeable on the drawings. First, with over 35% of grocery shoppers now using contactless pickup services due to COVID, we've included four dedicated parking spaces for convenient online customer pickup services. These say, these spaces are located on the southeast corner of the building between the market and the hotel. There's four of them. Second, SLT is committed to sustainable business practices and we will install LED lighting throughout the building, use Energy Star rated efficient refrigeration equipment and install two electric vehicle charging stations. The electrical charging stations will be powered, will power four vehicles simultaneously and will be dedicated next to the customer online pickup stations in the southeast corner of the building adjacent to Northwestern Highway. Our third item that is not very, uh, clear is that we are looking for the appropriate public art pieces for both the, um, restaurant area, building and the New Soul Plaza market. Um, we have begun talks with a local Korean artist that lives in Detroit. His name is Michael Han and he is working on building two sculptures for public installation. Um, once we have the drawings made, we will submit them to the city planner for the appropriate approval and comments. So we appreciate your ongoing support of this exciting international Korean destination. And it is our pleasure to answer any questions you may have regarding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry, did you want to add anything before I turn it over to council?
No, I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, council, I'll start with you, Ms. Banks?
Um, I have no questions right now. It looks like a beautiful site plan and I think it'll be a wonderful compliment, um, to that corner. Um, the Copper Canyon has been a eyesore for a long time and I'm looking forward to this proposal. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I, I have one question, but, uh, I've, I've been supportive of this project since, uh, since its inception. Uh, Rebecca, uh, I, I made a note to myself, um, and also on paper when I was reading. Did the international market, did it, was that to be originally inside the existing location, New Soul location? And now it's being branched out?
No, actually, um, it was targeted, um, uh, Mr. Crowe had mentioned that it was targeted to be built behind the New Soul Plaza where the rest, the three restaurants are located. Originally, we were going to erect a brand new building behind that existing restaurant building. But because the news, the Copper Canyon is available and we were able to, um, enter into discussions about possibly purchasing the land where it would financially make sense for us to move the market from behind, which it's, you know, visually it's harder to see the market from Northwestern Highway because you've got the New Soul Plaza in front of it. So this, moving it to the Copper Canyon, one, um, revitalizes the location much better. It has a bigger impact. It has better visibility. And it allows us to expand the restaurant, the, excuse me, the grocery store from a 9,000 square foot grocery store to almost a 15,000 square foot grocery store. So it a lot, it has many posi- positive, um, reasons for moving it to the Copper Canyon location rather than kind of hiding it behind the restaurants.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to ask about the, um, Copper Canyon portion. Is that going to be, uh, demo and rebuild or are we re- redeveloping?
It's going to be, go, go ahead.
I was just saying, I didn't quite catch that in the.
We're going to do selective demoing. Um, we're going to square off the building. As you know, if you look at this, what you're looking at now, it's pretty squared off except for the front entrance. Um, there is a portion in the southeast corner that has like a patio area right now. And then there's some kind of, um, triangular windows in the front off of Northwestern Highway that we're going to square off. And we're actually adding approximately 5,000 square feet to the north side of the building to expand the footprint. So we are going to use the steel. We're going to keep the, the roof line structure and also the, you know, the concrete pad. So those types of things will be salvaged and used again. But basically all the walls and the roof line will be redone. I mean, the materials, it will be re-roofed. And, uh, so it'll be practically a brand new building, similar to what we did, the renovation we did for the New Soul Garden, um, restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that's great. Um, and I just say, I, I really love the, the project, the connectivity, uh, with the New Soul, the first New Soul project that you did, the renovation there. And, uh, I also really just want to, uh, say that I, I thank you for paying attention to the artwork and such that's going to go in, uh, the spaces, uh, because it does, uh, make people feel a certain way when they see things that are important to them or learn new things about, um, people that they didn't know about or cultures they didn't know about too. So I think this is an awesome project, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No, uh, I, I, no questions for me on this. I just echo what my colleagues are s- have said and looking forward to this project getting going as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, I have no questions. I'm, I'm just glad that that property, uh, that has sat empty and vacant and almost blighted, uh, is getting some renewal, um, renewed development. And I'm happy to, that it's something of interest and diversity within, uh, within the city. So, um, I'm excited for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you so much for your presentation this evening. I am in support of this development. I was in support of, uh, phase one and, and now here we are some years later where we're able to do phase two. I, I think it will bring, uh, uh, like some of my other council, um, colleagues have said, uh, a, a new, um, uh, shine on diversity, uh, cultural, uh, dining options and just experiences overall. So I'm excited about this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mayor or anyone else on the call right now? Uh, any comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Terry, this will be brought back to us as well for.
On the 26th, yes.
For the public hearing?
Right. And there'll be the public hearing on the rezoning request and then you would act on the site plan review if that goes forward.
Okay. Well, thank you.
If everybody can keep this visual image in their head, um, it'll segue to Ms. Dawn and, and the next item. But we certainly can come back to, to the, uh, plan should, should council need a refresher.
Thank you. Attorney King?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So Planner Crowe just stated, um, everything that you just saw is related to the request for vacation of the consent judgment. Um, the same, um, representatives were here, uh, I think about two weeks ago. And they had discussed the escrow agreement that they had in place, um, that the, uh, Riverbank Homeowners Association had already approved the vacation of the, uh, consent judgment. Um, as you just heard, Councilwoman Morris said back in 2016, um, they had came before the council and asked for vacation of SLT Holdings parcel one and this is parcel two. Um, so also should have, they've had the escrow agreement that was mentioned, um, the last time that they came. So I don't know Ms. Lazarus, Mr. Gad or, uh, Sam was on the, I can't remember his last name. They want to discuss the escrow agreement again. The Riverbanks Homeowners Association has, um, approved this and now they're just waiting for the council to also provide their approval. And we've been working and talking about this for a couple of months. And so with that, I will turn it back over to them if they would like to present anything.
Sure. This is Larry Gad. I'm going to count one of the council for SLT Holdings. Um, if you will remember, the last time we were here, we presented, uh, or requested approval on, on an escrow agreement and the vacation of the consent judgment that goes back to 1973. Uh, the reason that we need the release from the consent judgment is it limits the use of the property to, I believe, restaurants, hotels and, and office buildings. And obviously we're asking to, to put in this marketplace that, that Rebecca, um, eloquently discussed with council. Um, we have received the approval from the Riverbank Homeowners Association. I know last time we were here that council did not have access to the documents and, and I'm hoping that everybody's had a chance to review those at this point. And there was a question as to whether the, uh, homeowners association had approved those and, uh, you will see their signature on, on those documents. And so what we are asking for is, um, we have a sign off on the order that would be, uh, amending the judgment or vacating the, the consent judgment from 1973 and then 1985, I think it was amended again, um, allowing the marketplace to go in. And we are asking for execution of an escrow agreement that would be conditioned upon two events. One being, uh, obviously approval from the city of this project and the second being, um, uh, the actual purchase closing of the property, uh, from the current owners. And once those two things occur, the, uh, judgment would be released from the escrow, which would be held with our law firm and we would, uh, file it with the court, at which point the, uh, project could go forward. If either of those events does not occur, the judgment would be released back to the homeowners association, um, and would, would ultimately not be entered. So there is, uh, essentially a, a protective measure so that if, if the events that we've discussed here don't occur, um, the, the consent judgment would remain in place. And if they do occur, um, which we are expecting and, and hoping that they will, um, the project would go forward and the consent judgment would be vacated. So if anyone has any questions about the documents, they're pretty straightforward, but certainly we're here to address any concerns or questions you might have.
This, this is Planner Crowe. I just want to clarify that, um, the underlying zoning is multiple family. And then the consent judgment, um, allowed the uses that the attorney had, had, um, previously stated. But it had a limitation on, on the type of restaurant and the size of the restaurant and so forth. By vacating the consent judgment, then the underlying zoning of RM would be in place. And that's why we would need to rezone that to, to the B2 commercial to allow for the market to go in place. So, uh, this has to precede the rezoning request. Um, and I just want to make sure that council is clear. We, we presented this in reverse because of the graphics, but this would have to come first before the rezoning. Thank you.
And thank you for that clarification. We would be requesting if city. And thank you for that clarification. We would be requesting if city council could approve this today for that reason.
Okay, I will, um, um, turn this over to council for discussion and, uh. Any questions that they may have regarding this, uh, consent judgment? Vacation of the consent judgment. And I will start with you, Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, I, I have no questions and, um, and I, I support this proposed. Vacation of the consent adjustment, consent adjustment.
Okay. Councilman Cruz? Okay, welcome back. Councilman Haskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this.
Okay, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, no, no questions. The, the only, well, that's not true. The only question I do have is. In our write-up, it didn't talk about having a, a rule ten to do this tonight, but is that what's being requested of us?
I, I know that's a request. I, if I could just jump in, I, I believe you could put this on your consent item next week. On the twelfth and that would precede the twenty-sixth public hearing for the rezoning. Um, if, if I could just add that in for your consideration.
Yes. Thank you for the question.
That, that's, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Um, no questions. Thank you for providing the, um, documents that we asked for, um, last, or two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Cruz?
Uh, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh.
I'm sure.
Yes, yes.
It, uh, I'm, I'm highly supportive of this, uh, this particular project and always have been. Terry, you, if you, uh, would, is it a. Would it facilitate or will, will it also serve the same purposes? We just wait till the consent next week? There's no, no need to, you know.
Yeah, I, I'll defer to, to Attorney King, but if, um, if you just put it on your consent, um. Agenda next week, there's no reason to do a real ten tonight. And, and that would still serve as vacating the consent judgment prior to your, uh, rezoning on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, I'm, I was just, didn't wanna make sure there was no. Snag or anything. And if, if it serves the same purpose, we just, with the consent of the, uh, chair, just move it to the consent next week.
Yes. Any comment, uh, Attorney King?
No, um, Madam President, thank you. Um, I, I knew we had to have it done before. The approval of the site plan. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So yes, this item will go on the consent agenda next week and then the public hearing will be on the. The presentation of the rezoning on the twenty-sixth. Okay, thank you very much. Our next item, I'm sorry, was there a comment?
I was just saying thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Our next item is the American Rescue Plan presentation?
Thank you, Ma- Madam President. This is Administrator Zorn. Yeah, I'm, um, this presentation will probably prompt more questions than we still have answers. Both myself and Finance Director Austin Michaels have now, uh. Gone through three presentations from the National League of Cities as well as, uh, documents from M M L. Uh, SEMCOG and we're still waiting for an awful lot of guidance from the, uh, U S Department of Treasury. Madam Clerk, if you could bring up the, the slides from the PowerPoint?
Uh, that would be I T. Wendell? There you go.
All right, the next slide. We'll just start right, uh, and. On, um, March first of, of this year, uh, President Biden signed into, uh. The legislation, the, uh, American, uh, Rescue, uh, COVID stimulus. Uh, for the first time, all nineteen thousand municipal governments in the, uh, country are entitled. To direct non-competitive federal formula grants from the U S, uh, Treasury. Direct funding means all cities, towns and villages are entitled to, uh, federal grant. Um, from, from the, uh, cor- cor- uh, coronavirus, uh, local fiscal recovery fund. Southfield's allocation is ten million eight hundred eighty-two dollars, six ninety-three. Because of the size of our community and that we are also an entitlement. Community from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. We will be receiving our allocations directly from the U S Treasury to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan has indicated we will receive the allocations over a, um. In, in two installments. The, um. Aid, uh, obligates, um, municipalities, uh, so it's, so it cannot be mingled. With other aid and, uh, from the state or county governments. The aid is protected from state or county interference by some pretty ironclad statutes. We're still waiting to find out exactly what that means. Uh, the next slide window. This is where this gets interesting. Uh, eligible expenditures, um. A, uh, to respond. Uh, to public health emergency with respect to the, uh, coronavirus disease. Or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits or aids impacted. Uh, aid to impacted industries such as, uh, tourism, travel and hospitality. It's supposed to be no more restrictive than the CARES Act, uh, which was, uh, monies administered by HUDs. I, you know, I find that a little bit ironic because there were quite a bit of restrictions on the CARES Act. Um, and to remind council, you did allocate, uh, roughly, uh, three hundred fifty thousand. For, uh, families under the CARES Act and. Uh, we continue to work our way, uh, through that money. Our Human Services Department's doing a great job on that. Item B is to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency. By providing premium pay to eligible workers of a metropolitan sitting, non-entitlement unit of government or county. You know, this, um, allows us to cover expenses and overtime incurred. By our, our employees. This also allows the municipality to provide up to thirteen hour, thirteen dollars per hour. Above regular wages. Um, that's pretty much your overtime cost. That would cover a portion of our overtime costs for a police and, uh, firefighter. Item, the next slide, uh, 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 window, please? I think we've, you're one ahead of me. Uh, go, uh, C. All right, for the provision of government services to the extent, reduction in revenue. Uh, to metropolitan center, city non-entitlement. That really means that during the past year, we have lost revenue for various programs. For example, our building department revenues are down. Uh, Parks and Rec has lost revenue, libraries lost revenue. Um, we're allowed to recoup those revenues that we've lost or have not been able to, uh, collect. Um, item D, uh, is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, broadband in- infrastructure. And, you know, the last comment is the Department of Treasury continues to provide, will, needs to give us more guidance. On that. You know, our current thought process on this, you know, as we did. Uh, during the first part of the COVID crisis, uh, March. Of twenty twenty through October, we brought in just under seven million dollars. In recouping monies that, uh, funds we were able to ta- obtain from Oakland County. For police and fire, uh, retrofitting our buildings, uh, and other expenses we, we. Had associated with this crisis. Um, our thought is to come back to council. And make recommendations over, uh, that would divide the money into two years. Uh, part of it going to cover our additional employee expenses we're incurring. To deal with this pandemic, lost revenues. Um, and that, with the amount being, you know, ten million. We feel confident that over a two-year period, we'll have no problem, um, spending that money. Uh, the next item you have before you is a request we've received from the Centropolis Accelerator. It is an eligible activity. It focuses on our career center and providing additional space. For our cu- career center to be able to do its, uh, do what we do, help people find work. The, uh, other part is for the accelerator and helping our entrepreneurs. And our small business owners continue to expand and grow, uh, new, into new economies. As we climb out of, of, and work to avoid a recession. Madam President, you know, at your direction, I'm happy to ask questions. There will be more information coming out. Uh, I looked again this afternoon, uh, to see if anything has been updated and we're still waiting for more guidance on this and. Um, we're not a- a- requesting action on this item tonight. Um, but I'm happy to attempt to, uh, answer any questions.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I, my understanding was this was a presentation for us and. Nothing for us to act on or anything like that, but I will, um, ask council, open up the council for any questions. And I will start with you, Mr. Cruz.
Yes, uh, no need to go into questioning too much right now. I just appreciate the update. And, uh, we'll look forward to hearing back from, uh, the administrator when he has more data or information to share with us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Haskins?
Uh, yeah, uh, no, no questions for me, uh, either. Uh. And there, it's just a lot of moving parts, so, um. Yeah, we're still just, you know, constantly getting informa- more and more information about what we can and can't do, uh, with this money. Um, so I would just, you know, I was waiting, uh, till we get more information to, uh, to start asking more questions.
Okay. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, I have no questions. I, I appreciate the, uh, presentation. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Thank you. No, no questions for me. Uh, Fred just shared, um, a similar presentation in the Economic Development Committee meeting. So I look forward to, uh, hearing more information coming down the pike as we learn more about how we can use these funds.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Banks?
Um, thank you for the information. Um, when this is brought back before us, is there a way that we could get? A list of the local companies that have benefited from the Centropolis Accelerator, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Brightwell?
Um, but, uh, obviously I heard this presentation before also, but I, I, Fred, I have a question. Uh, this, this brings to mind when I had to write my, you know, performance review for the year. Um. The comprehensive need assessment that we had done, uh, and I. I love that project. I'd love that we had outside consultant kid come in and take a look at. The comprehensive need of the city. And whenever I, whenever I get a, understand we get a chunk of money coming in like this, I would hate to see it go to waste. Or we would dip into the general fund to pay for something. Uh, that we can pay for with these funds that are coming in. So. In some way, I, I keep missing something. How much? Of this funds can we apply to our comprehensive need assessment? Which are deemed to be a need of the city over the next ten to twenty years?
I, that, that, that's an ex- excellent question. The stimulus. Speaks to a nexus to COVID. How are we responding to the COVID, um, crisis? Yeah, I, I, I like using the term, uh, fungibility, that money. For example, we budget, we have budgeted in next year's budget for overtime. For the overtime that we can, uh, charge. Uh, at the, for the employee and overtime co- cost that we can charge to co- to this grant. I would recommend that we charge that and then back, uh, up. What we had budgeted and put that towards your capital expenditure. Several reasons for that. One, the employee costs. Are clearly eligible. Um, when we start putting capital costs, uh, utilizing federal grants, you start pulling. Different triggers. Candidly, on what I've read in this so far. I'm not sure. Our facility and capital needs, unless we can, you know, a portion of those costs. That are dr- that we can directly attribute to making our buildings. Less vulnerable to the spread of COVID. Uh, you know, now I'm talking, what can we do to improve air quality? Um, with, with the, in the building, certain things like that. We need to have a nexus of. How, how this works to prevent or respond to COVID. So I would, you know, the dollar amount. At, uh, ten point eight million over two years is a smaller amount. Our low hanging fruit is probably identifying revenues we've lost. And then programming those, those dollars, um. Uh, you know, they, they, the lost dollars come back to. Our general fund, our Parks and Rec fund, and then from there we allocate the, uh, those from fund balance. To capital projects and, you know, um, I'm gonna want some counsel, probably from our auditors. And how we will, how and what will be required as we go through our annual, uh, single audit. Uh, which complies to, um, fed- federal grants. Although this says they wanted to give us a lot of leeway. We're not getting much direction as to what that leeway is gonna look like.
Right. Well, that, that sounds good. I, and that, uh, you make me feel a little better because I was gonna stay on this until, until they came home. Uh, because it, 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 it just made sense for us to churn these dollars because we have a need. That need assessment tells us what we need to do over the ten to next twenty years. Uh, and so no, no sense in letting this opportunity slide by. If we can put dollars to that. To that particular need over this two years, that eliminates the amount of taxpayer, direct taxpayer dollars we need to do. To satisfy this need assessment over the year. But I do feel, I, I, I like the way you're thinking to be, to really, you know, to, to be honest with you. I see that you are, you are, you do appreciate the fact we have this study, the need assessment out there and I. I do sense you're aware of that. So, okay, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the presentation too, Fred. Okay, uh, anyone else have any questions for Fred before we go to the next item? Okay, hearing none. Our, uh, next item is the coronavirus aid assistance.
Yes. Good, good evening. Um, um, can you go back, Wendell, a few slides? Thank you. Right there. Good evening, Council President, Honorable Board. Southfield Centropolis Accelerator and Oakland County, Michigan, Work Southfield are overwhelmed by the influx of clients. And we will be challenged to meet the future needs based on the new requirements from Corona. Next slide. Southfield, along with the other largest cities in Michigan, are seeing the negative effects of largely empty office buildings as workers work remotely. The effects of the pandemic have been far reaching for all industries, but it is very clear that it's changed the way that real estate is conducted. As you know, our annual budget for Centropolis is based on our TIF collections. Um, the demand for space is being impacted by social distancing, shutdowns, quarantines, layoffs and remote work. This will definitely affect the amount of space leased within our Smart Zone District. Currently, we have an annual budget of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we have a balance in our Smart Zone Fund of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. These, this amount of money is already allocated for existing, um. These, this amount of money is already allocated for existing um, purposes and the the slight increase in our balance is not going to be enough to support all of our future needs. Next slide. Demand for services have skyrocketed over the last year as innovators and entrepreneurs are seeking new opportunities. Companies are shifting to provide PPE. People are looking to create new careers due to layoffs, downsizing and that have resulted from COVID. Next slide. As you are aware, the Centropolis Accelerator's mission is to help um, hardware physical product innovators with developing their products by supporting design, engineering, prototyping, testing, manufacturing needs. And the facility also offers co-working space, meeting rooms and host events. Next slide. Councilman Banks, you wanted some Southfield businesses and here's a few that we've been helping, including Tukanda Brooks. Um, she was highlighted. Her company is Sandy 360. She's done an excellent job. She's one of the entrepreneurs that have really um, blossomed during this COVID time, creating a business that helps um, ensure that space is cleaned properly. Some of the other Southfield businesses that have been attracted to the accelerator are listed on the slide in ourselves. Um, qualified 3D, well, CAF um, papers, uh, wearology, uh, tote openers, they're a whole array of companies and they all have a variety of products that they're creating. Next slide. Inquiries um, for the hardware community have increased by 500% between the time we've opened in 2020. They've um, had over 322 unique companies that have come forward. Centropolis is seeking to purchase um, additional prototyping, lab supplies, equipment and to upgrade their existing space specifically for conference rooms, um, sound system and to hire a part-time lab manager for the existing space. And you can see an array of products that have come out of um, the last year. Many of them are related to COVID. And um, again, we leverage the relationship that we have with Lawrence Tech and the students and the professors at the university. So it's um, it's been great, but they're very overwhelmed. Um, next slide. Also, it's very important for us to ensure safety for our clients and for the Oakland County, Michigan Works staff. Without the additional space and technology, it'll be very difficult to manage the employment needs. Um, the employment needs are our employers and the job seekers. New social distancing requirements will hamper the ability of Michigan Works to offer larger scale workforce development training concurrently with training for the employer services as we did during the pandemic, uh, pre-pandemic. This is uh, one of the largest um, centers in the state and we have one of the best reputations and we want to maintain that and by our lack of space, it will stifle our ability to serve the clients. Next slide. At this time, we're asking for um, $700,000 to address these needs and they're broken out um, by the different departments. The existing Centropolis Accelerator, again, we're looking to purchase some new supplies and to make some modifications to the existing room to allow for more social distancing and bring out a part-time lab manager. We've identified a space that is in between the Centropolis location and Oakland County, Michigan Works. There is a room that we can convert into a shared conference room. It would be managed by the Centropolis Accelerator staff. We're asking to um, go into a five-year lease at the current $10 rate um, for the space, so it would be about, it would be $17,196 a year um, to lease this space. And then the cost of the build-out, um, contract management, and to purchase new furniture, equipment, cameras, um, security, that type of thing, um, are listed on the slide as well. So it it totals um, $700,000 with a contingency. Are there any questions?
I'll uh, go around and ask counsel at this time and I'll start with you, Mr. Cruz.
Yes, uh, everything, I I I really don't have uh, any real questions on this. Um, I think it looks like a good use of the funds and uh, appreciate Shel for doing, getting this together, so. No, I'll, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this. I do remember when I first got elected, um, kind of touring the um, the space and um, I know they do a lot of great, great things there. So you know, these improvements, I I I know will definitely be helpful for them. Uh, so no, no questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilman um, Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, no questions for me. I think this is great that we're going to try to help more and more people. Um, I I so I think this is something that we should uh, definitely uh, move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morris?
Well, I do have one question. Um, Shelley, are you, are these funds coming from the American Rescue Plan? Is that what you're asking for um, assistance with?
That's correct. I I um, I know that these dollars are um, geared towards helping people get back to work and for entrepreneurship and it fits into the profile of what these two facilities offer.
Okay, and you're asking for the total cost of the project?
$700,000.
Yes, I'm I'm looking at it. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, no questions for me. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, great presentation, um, Rochelle. Um, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, this will go on our consent agenda. Uh, next, yeah, next week. Thank you. Uh, now we're at our communications portion. Uh, do we have anyone um, on the line?
Um, Madam President, we do have a few people that's been waiting a while. I'll go with the uh, first caller. One second. There you go, sir, with it.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello? Yes, hello. My name is John McCurdy. I am owner of uh, 1986012 Mile Road, which is a historic McDonald House. Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me be here. I'd like to sincerely thank everybody on the board and all the members present for um, getting things done, so only so many hours um, in a day, so thank you very much. But I'm here to ask for support with the site plan approvals, tax break and assistance with engineer plan in the relocation of the original one-story house, which is 27 by 30, owned by the Bell family dating back to 1850. The option would, one option to move the the original house is a half a mile away to Engle Nook Park for the preservation of this historical house. The Bell family has a long his history in Southfield, working with the community. Rec recognition of this family home would serve to acknowledge Southfield's rich history of the model families that settled here a long time ago. My opinion is the Bell family helped many family, many people coming from the Rouge River to 12 Mile Evergreen Church. Um, so they really helped the community. The original Bell family structure was one-story house. Later, another first and second floor was added. Over time, the structure continues to deteriorate. It needs updating. I would like to add attached garage, replace the roof and trusses to add a fire suppression system and update building codes and handicap accessibility. This will help create safety for the biz for any business or businesses to consider developing their business in the historic McDonald House. I plan on to work on marketing the historic McDonald House with a vision that embraces community spirit such as Lions International, also support the youth of today, college students doing hand car washes, exercise area and a commitment to City of Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your comments. Um, our next person?
I just, uh, Madam President, I just unmute it. The next person that was in line?
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I wish Madam President to talk about Section 11.18. 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. 11.18 is entitled amendments which describes how this council may amend the charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy-two-step Michigan state law known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909. Thus making Section 11.18 null and void. Yes, you heard me right. Null and void. 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958. The very same year that Elvis was inducted into the US Army. That's when the nine neophyte commissioners, who are the original authors of the charter, accidentally deleted from Section 11.18 the second step in a two-step procedure that is needed to amend the charter. State law mandate yesterday and today that it takes two, not one, but two. Two mandatory steps to amend the charter. I repeat, it takes two. Uno, dos. Comprende? Sadly, Section 11.18 categorically deletes state mandatory step number two. In a word, after 63 years, that is, after 63 long, long, long years, it is about time that you folks here on this council wake up and do yourselves a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter and your city charter. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, good evening to the residents that are listening and to council members. I would like to thank all of you that called, sent flowers and plants. Since I lost my mother on March 22nd, I really appreciate you. To the residents that called me, you know, I have loved you for a long time. To Mayor Ken Seiver, Councilman Michael Mandelbaum, Senator Moss, Councilman Hoskins, Cruz and all of the other employees, thank you so much. My mother said to her children, she didn't come to stay. She was just passing through and she did that with such grace, humor, finesse and love. She told us to enjoy the journey and to make it count and that the struggle continues, so thank you all. And it was her birthday yesterday on Easter Sunday. You know, I am really concerned about the council members that we have that appear to be turning, taking thousands of dollars in donations into a best practice. When will this council do what I suggested years ago and do a council procedure or resolution forbidding council members from taking donations from petitions or from petitioners that come before council with a deal or project that they have to vote on? Now, the last time a council person called me out, I didn't like it. It was disrespectful because this council person taking $9,000 from a petitioner that he voted on a project that came before council may not be illegal, but it's unethical. Dan Brightwell, you should be ashamed of yourself. Not only have you done this with the Dallow family for the marijuana place, you did it with Sapphire, you did it with the people, the the Dr. Krishna with the um, Event Center down there in 12 Mile. This has got to stop. You are no different than Donald Trump. You are no different justifying what would be referred to if you were on a federal level as the Amoluments Clause or the Hatch Act. You are profiting from the people that come before the city. I don't like it. You should give the money back and shame on you. You are really diminishing the integrity and the respect of the people representing this city that's on council. Thank you.
Madam President, we still have, the lines are open for anybody else who wanted to talk.
Hi. Hello, hi, yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, it's okay to go ahead and comment?
Yes, please. Would you give us your name and address for the record?
Sure, Tanya Walton, 25328 Acacia, Southfield, 48033.
Thank you.
Um, my first comment is in regards to a statement that was made earlier. I believe it was made by your city planner, but I'm unsure. Um, when we were reviewing, there was an item that was reviewed and basically it was stated that we have already voted on this item, so I'm unsure as to why we're talking about it. I am a newer resident resident to Southfield, but it's my understanding that even when an item has been approved, the public still has a right to comment on it. Um, I'm assuming that's correct. So the tone set earlier, um, basically it came off as not professional and definitely not appropriate to state as to why we were discussing it because the council had already approved it, um, not understanding that. And my next comment was regarding the zoning issues. It was brought to our attention in my subdivision, which is Bird Point subdivision, that the city council is over the zoning areas. So the concern was three marijuana medical facilities that were right next to each other, basically two at Telegraph and 12 Mile and one for Lasher and 696. Based on our kind of informal survey with our neighborhood, I just want to go on the record to state that we are in disagreement with this in this code 48033 and we are concerned about the type of traffic that it may bring to our neighborhood which could result in just all kinds of things such as, you know, lower property values and everything of that sort. Um, I do have questions regarding that, but I'm just going to guess that isn't the, isn't the appropriate time for the questions. Um, I also wanted to go on the record and say that if we're joining by phone, I guess I am, I am not or was not able to view the chart that you all were looking at. Um, we have concerns about, again, the rezoning or the zoning areas of those three facilities um, being closely together and being closely related to our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we, we were not uh, discussing the um, marijuana facilities tonight, but you are welcome to contact our facilities tonight, but you are welcome to contact our planning commission, our, uh, department at any time to discuss your concerns. Or if you want to write them or send them and send them to us via the clerk's office, and she will disseminate to all of the council people.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Planner Crowe. Can I, can I at least provide some, um, background to the council?
Yes, please.
As you know, um, we have gone through eight weeks of public input, uh, survey, uh, on various topics for the master plan update. We also have reached out to several homeowners groups to offer a virtual meeting specifically to talk about the master plan. And I believe the resident is referring to a meeting that was held last week by Mr. Spence where, um, he brought up the issue of, um, medical marijuana and recreational marijuana because at the time, that that was the week's questions to get input from the the residents on what their feelings are moving forward. And I believe he stated that there are currently three medical marijuana provisioning centers, three processing, and three grow that have already previously been approved by council, which is correct. That took place over a year ago. So I I think there was a misunderstanding that we were currently considering, um, these medical marijuana facilities, and as council knows, they put a pause on any future marijuana facilities last fall to see, um, if there's any unintended consequences from the ones that, uh, have previously been approved. So I just wanted to offer that clarification that, um, it was just a statement of fact that there currently are three provisioning centers that have been approved and that we are in the process of public input, taking, uh, comments from residents on future discussions on medical marijuana, recreational marijuana, and other types of marijuana businesses. And that that's all our intent is right now, is to get input from the community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on that. I believe, uh, a flyer, a nominus flyer was submitted to the neighborhood that had some incorrect information on it, and, um, I'd be happy to clarify any of those issues at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any other callers on the that's waiting to speak right now, since we're still under communications? Okay, well, hearing none, I guess, uh, that's it for communications. Uh, Terry, thank you for, uh, updating us and giving us some background on that. But I I just wanted to let residents know if they do have a question, they can contact, um, the planning department directly uh, with any of their questions or concerns, or they can write them and email them to to the clerk, and she'll disseminate them to, um, to the council or to the proper departments for a response. Okay, uh, next we have our, uh, we're supposed to be going into a closed session?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, this is Councilman Brightwell again. Uh, I know you want to go into closed session, but I, if I could, just make been accused of something here.
Oh, yes. Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Okay, it's, it's good to hear that I'm still living free in Pam Gerald's mind after all these years. But, uh, for the general public, all politicians are required to file campaign financial reports. And I file campaign financial reports, and I try to file them as accurately as possible. And they're there for the world to see. One final statement that comes since, if you're a criminal, you don't put certain things that you do criminal on, in paper, and you allow the world to see them. The last statement I'm gonna make is that for anybody out there, if you follow the news, you know, the Department of Justice has flooded southeast Michigan for the last five or ten years with Department of Justice public corruption attorneys. The fact that my public, my campaign financial report is public, anybody in the world can get a copy of it. You can call the Department of Justice. They have a lot of attorneys in southeast Michigan who are public corruption attorneys. If you have a case, please go to them and get your stick, your case started. And they would probably say, well, this is the easiest case in the world. A guy put down what he did. So, uh, Ms. Gerald, it's good to know I'm living rent-free in your mind, and I don't know what stuff got you started again. But, um, I just want the public to know that you are talking about things that are part of a public record. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session uh, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Public Act Two-Sixty-Seven, Section Seven, MCL fifteen-point-six-A-C, a discussion for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement in a closed session as requested by one of the negotiating parties.
Madam President, I move we go to closed session. Councilman Cruz?
Councilman Mandelbaum supports.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for us to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now, uh, go into closed session. We'll have a brief, um, five minutes, and in five minutes, we should all reconvene as a closed session. Thank you. We're now back from closed session. Uh, council, is there anything else for the meeting tonight? Okay, well, hearing none, I now declare this meeting closed or over. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.